Thank you. Announcements, Madam Clerk?
This is a time for board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any announcements from the board? Supervisor Mills?
Not so much an announcement, but maybe just a public awareness with those storms that we had last week. I think our public works staff did an exemplary job keeping up with the downed trees and garbage on the road and everything that was going on. I'd just like to compliment them for their going above and beyond in the snow plowing effort that was happening in the high country. And also for the public, please, please be aware, when there is snow plowing activity going on in the high country, the cars parked on our major thoroughfares creates a traffic hazard, it creates a problem. And we just need to be aware, keep those cars off the road so those plows can get through and keep those roads open. I personally experienced it, so it's just something that we all need to be aware of and do our part.
You were in my district and you didn't tell me? Did you spend money?
Didn't even, no. Yes, I did.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Mills. Supervisor, stop her.
Order forms are out, Girl Scout cookies are coming.
This is what we all need, right? Any announcements from staff? Kathy?
Good morning, Chair and Board. This is Kathy Galino from Economic Development. We have the point in time count that we're going to be working on starting tomorrow. It is part of the Calaveras Leadership Project that we're doing in collaboration with the Continuum of Care and Sierra Hope, where we have volunteers who are going to be going out to the various districts and doing counts of the homeless and providing care bags for those that we find, collecting that information.
Thank you. Our librarian, Nancy?
Sorry, I'm running around. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to share two really exciting things that are going to be happening at the library beginning this week. The first one actually began last week and I intended to come and share it with you, but I was stuck in a training to learn how to use our new equipment that we have received at the library from another library grant from our state library, that our collaboration, our 4999 group, the six of us who work together on those two highways, received from a grant that we submitted together. And we've received some wonderful, wonderful teleconferencing equipment, two gigantic 65-inch screens, two cameras, and we will be able to do collaborative education throughout our system, but not only that, also stream, live streaming from anyone who has similar equipment. We have been told that we'll be able to stream things from, for example, the Smithsonian and NASA and other educational entities which provide streaming education. So we're very excited about this. Our test course will be broadcast beginning this Wednesday. It will come to us from the Stockton Public Library. And they will be conducting English as a Second Language class, classes, for 20 weeks. We have tried to share this information with those who we think would be interested in that, but I hope that you'll also share that information. It will be every Wednesday afternoon, 4:30 to 5:30, in the Chesapeake Room in the San Andreas Library. So we'll test this equipment. We tested it last Friday and all of us were there and talking. It will be a collaborative class, but we will also record these for anyone who can't come during those times. It wouldn't be interactive, but they would get the benefit of the instructions. So we're very excited about this opportunity for our county that the library can offer English as a Second Language. The second thing began actually last Wednesday. I have a flyer here for you. This is our STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art and Math, enhancement education that we're doing through the library. We do this every Wednesday for about two months now. We have served our homeschool children with a wonderful science and technology program every morning during the same hours that we have storytime for our little ones. But beginning last Wednesday, we're offering after-school programming for our school kids. I took flyers to the elementary schools in the north here, and a flyer went home in every children's, child's packet. So we actually began last Wednesday, but if you remember last Wednesday, it was pouring rain. We still had eight children who came for this and we're expecting many, many more. We actually gave out about 800 flyers. So I told the STEAM guy, be prepared, we don't know what we're going to have. But this will be taking place in the Chesapeake Room every Wednesday after school, 3 to 5. So if you have kids that age, or it's from, for kids from 6 to 12, and if they, you have kids those age, or have grandkids those age, or no children in your neighborhood, please tell them to come. We did not advertise in the south part of the county, but if we, we have sent flyers to all the branches. So of course we would, need to get a new thing. We would, of course, we would welcome children from any part of our county. But this is wonderful, wonderful education. The children have an absolutely amazing time and learn tremendous things. Last week, they made paper airplanes and talked about the principles of aerodynamics and how to put their fins on in certain ways that would make their airplanes go faster. So they have lots and lots of fun, and so I wanted you guys to know that this is going on every Wednesday in the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What a great library. Seeing no other staff announcements, we'll move on to recognition and acknowledgements.
Item one is from the Public Works Department to adopt a proclamation recognizing Scott McReynolds for 19 years of distinguished public service in the Department of Public Works Roads and Bridges Division.
Do you want to read the proclamation first or public comment? Josh, one of the chief.
Sure, I'll get started. So good morning, Chair Garamendi and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works, and this is a good day for us. A lot of times, we come to you with things that are, some are controversial, some aren't, but this is one of the joys of my job, is getting an opportunity to highlight someone who's been so important to us for nearly 20 years. So Scott McReynolds, more affectionately known as Scotty Mack, has served our county for 19 years in a variety of positions. He started as a young buck, as a road maintenance worker extra hire in 1999, working his way up through the ranks to become a road supervisor in 2007 in the Arnold District, in Supervisor Calloway's District. Then over the next 10 years, spent time as a sign supervisor and a public works inspector before finally settling two years ago, not settling, but before finishing up his job as a road maintenance supervisor in San Andreas. Scotty Mack is known for being a positive, energetic member of our team. Every time I've had interactions with him in my short time here, nothing but positivity, a great attitude, someone who cares about the county, and getting an opportunity to recognize folks that work for our road maintenance division who do a lot of the work that's unsung, that's behind the scenes, you don't know their work until they do it wrong. But to see someone like that start or do a significant portion of career, in his career here, is something that we're really proud of. So he is obviously why retiring today. He could not make it today due to a last-minute issue, but again, it's someone that we're really proud of and proud to come before you and request this proclamation for his service with the county. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
No, you just stay right there.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Okay, this is the resolution. He did most of the wherethes. This is going to be hung in the fitness center. He doesn't know that yet, and that's because he's not here. So how did I, since Scott and I worked together really well, and so I was very excited about coming back, no offense, and getting to work with Mack again. So how did I know he was retiring? I read it in the Public Works Director Monthly Epistle to the Board. So I'm at the gym, and I'm on the elliptic, advertising that I do try and keep in shape, and Mack walks out of the other room. And I said, well, like, what are you doing? When were you going to tell me this? He said, well, I've known for a few months, but I was afraid to tell you. I said, you're damn right you're afraid to tell me. So we had a little encounter. So part of my presentation, I'm going to do the public works. Okay. This was given to me four years ago. Can't remember what happened four years ago, but it was given to me four years ago. And so I was going to give this to Mack today, in case he had a pothole or a flood, you can call somebody else.
Fair enough.
And the other thing is, the, probably if any of you were part of a whatever, there's always the same people that go about the same time. So Mack always goes to Family for Fitness about the same time I do, usually a little bit later. He wears these shirts and he cuts off the sleeves. So I was going to cut him off, but the gym owner told me, let him do it. So you can give this to him, because I'm hosting the resolution. I was very honored to work with Mack, and he was an awesome county representative. So there you go. Have a comb, and give it to him or keep it.
Thank you.
So do you want to do the wherethes?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
We have to vote on them already.
Doing catch-up. Are any of you going to object? Don't even go there, Tuffinelli. I make a motion that we approve this proclamation honoring Scott McReynolds for his service to Calaveras County.
Is there a second?
Actually, I wanted to hear the proclamation, but that's all right. I will second it.
Motion by Supervisor Calloway, second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chair, did we want public comment on this?
Shouldn't we not read it? In public comments?
Let's do some public comment. We're a little backwards here.
Good morning. I just have a question. Isn't there a kind of lucrative retirement package when you hit 20 years with the county? Isn't there a difference between working 19 years and working 20 years? Does anybody know?
It's public comment.
Okay, well, if that is indeed the case, I'm just wondering why he couldn't hang in a little longer and get the benefits that are due him from putting all the time in that he has?
That's because he places sports bets in the cardio room at the gym to augment his retirement.
Got it.
Ms. Calloway, just, it's illegal to be offline betting.
Independently wealthy, then.
Other public comment? Thank you. You want to read the therefore?
No, because Mr. Pack did most of it. It would be just redundant.
House of Congress Taxpayer Association, that was incredible presentation. It might be a good idea to read the proclamation, because you voted on it. How can you vote on something you don't know what it says?
Oh, because you just take my word. The reason I didn't do it is because it was mostly what the Public Works Director said. He said, all of the jobs that Mack did. But in the interest of full disclosure, I'll do it. I'm not going to do the part that he already did. I'll just wrap it up. We, all of us who've worked with Scott have benefited from his knowledge, years of commitment to Calaveras. His service has been marked by exemplary and energetic leadership within the Department of Public Works. And whereas his persistence and dedication have earned him the respect and camaraderie of his coworkers and the county supervisor, and Scott will be missed by staff and the county supervisor and those who work with, who found him a devoted friend and coworker. Therefore, be it proclaimed, the Calaveras Board of Supervisors wish to extend their deep appreciation to Scott McReynolds for his consistency, strong leadership, and thank him for his 19 years of contribution to the public. And motion and a second today.
Thank you very much, Josh. Thank you very much, Supervisor Calloway. I was wondering if those cold meds were kicking in there for a little while. Next proclamation.
Item two is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors to proclaim January 2019 as National Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. What, there you go.
So would everyone who's here to support mentoring, please stand up? Come up with me?
When you're speaking, please be sure to introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. I'm Katie Lackler, Coordinator for the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program. I just have a little presentation. I don't know if you want to read the proclamation first, or if I should do this first.
Why don't you go ahead and make your presentation, then we'll read the proclamation.
Okay. So we are here to ask you to recognize January as National Mentoring Month in Calaveras County. This is the largest-scale mentoring campaign nationwide. It is an opportunity to connect more young people with caring adults and to recognize the mentoring relationships that form and thrive every day. According to a national study by Big Brothers Big Sisters, youth with mentors are less likely to skip a day of school, to start using drugs, and more likely to enroll in college. But at its core, mentoring shows our young people that there is someone who cares about them, someone who sees their strengths and wants to nurture their talents. As you know, we are fortunate to have some pretty amazing kids in Calaveras County, kids who face life's challenges with strength, resilience, creativity, and hope. Kids who are willing to invite a safe adult into their lives who believes in them and wants to invest in their greatness. My name is Katie Lackler, and I'm the Coordinator for the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program, a best practices program that connects local youth with safe, positive mentors who offer friendship, opportunity, and support for making healthy life decisions. The mentoring program currently has 24 matches and a waiting list of about 10 eager boys and girls. We fully screen, monitor, and support our volunteer mentors and mentees, and provide training, field trips, and mentor council. Volunteer mentors spend a few hours every week for at least one year with their mentee, having fun and building a friendship. Over the past 16 years, the mentoring program has made 160 matches and sustained an incredible 84% success rate. This means that 84% of our matches make it to at least one year, a testament to a program structure that prioritizes building and sustaining strong friendships. Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program evaluation data also consistently shows the benefits of mentoring on a young person's life. Our mentees build stronger relationships, explore new interests and hobbies, improve their self-confidence, decision-making, and their view of their future. This year, the mentoring program is expanding to include youth ages 16 to 21 in a young adult mentoring group designed to support young adults in their transition to adulthood. In monthly group gatherings, young adults practice life skills and get support for their individual challenges. There are eight mentor-mentee matches and three youth on the waiting list who are currently involved in this program. And I'd like to introduce Shira Harris, our newest Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program Coordinator. Shira is using her experience in education and her passion for supporting youth to grow and strengthen this new young adult mentoring program. During National Mentoring Month, we also celebrate our FNL Mentoring Program, Friday Night Live Mentoring, which connects high school students with middle school proteges and is now in its 11th year in Calaveras schools. More than 500 students have participated in FNL Mentoring over the years. June McTier, who was not able to join us today, participated in FNL Mentoring as a student at Calaveras High School, and she is now the Coordinator for this program in Calaveras County. The Calaveras Mentoring Foundation was formed in 2010 to raise awareness and funds for local youth mentoring and has successfully done so every year since. And I just wanted to ask you all to take just a second to think about the mentors you've had in your life, to think about the people at different points who have supported you, who have helped you in your transitions throughout life. I know we all have had some, at least I know I've had some strong, strong people who've helped me get to where I am. And your proclamation today describes the need for more mentors. Every youth who wants a mentor should have one, but not every young person gets one. There are currently 10 boys and girls throughout Calaveras County waiting for a mentor with an even longer list of youth interested in applying for the program. Please look over the list you have in front of you and contact us, contact me if you know of anyone who might make a good mentor for one of these kids. There's many ways that you can support mentoring in Calaveras County. One of the best ways is to talk to your friends, talk to the people in your network about mentoring, and suggest to someone that they might make a good mentor. Like us on Facebook, share our posts, make a financial gift, or host one of our program representatives to speak at a community organization. Together, I know we can find mentors for all of the kids in Calaveras County who are waiting for one. Thank you, and happy National Mentoring Month.
Thank you very much. Supervisor, stop her. Do you want to read the proclamation?
I want to do public comment first.
Let's do it after.
Whereas the future of Calaveras County rests on the hopes and dreams of its children and youth, and whereas mentors provide valuable role models for our youth, and whereas relationships with safe, positive mentors offer youth friendship, opportunity, and support for making healthy life decisions, and whereas national studies indicate youth with a mentor are less likely to skip school, less likely to start using drugs, and less likely to start drinking, and whereas the Calaveras County Office of Education administers award-winning mentoring programs that serve more than 75 students and young adults every school year, and whereas youth with mentors in the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program have improved their self-confidence and ability to make decisions, expanded their sense of the future, and improved their attitude towards schools and their teachers, and whereas there are many Calaveras youth waiting for mentors, and whereas National Mentoring Month provides an opportunity to recognize and commend the efforts of mentors and raise community awareness of the importance of mentoring. Now therefore...
Any public comment?
Thank you.
Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any comments or discussion, motion?
I'll move aside him, Mr. Chair.
I'd only add a comment, and I know these young leads, I've had some discussions with a few of you, that those that are involved in taking care of youth that are displaced, mentors come in all forms, and if you've ever been in a welfare situation, you can fully understand that these young people, they need guidance, and they are looking for an opportunity to set those boundaries and the framework of how life, how to interact with people, how to interact with society. And so this is a very valuable piece to giving, putting them on the right track and giving those, them those tools that are so critical. I had three foster children in my home, and I know they watched us constantly, looking for what those guidelines and boundaries were. So if you know of anyone that is willing to take the time, you will grow from it as well. This isn't just a one-way street. So please consider it as an opportunity that you might not only help some young person, but help yourself as well.
I'd like to endorse what Supervisor Mills said, and I think mentors come in many shapes and forms, and some come through organized programs, and some come through your schools or your workplace, or just your neighbor down the street. And I think we all should embrace that role of helping others and really celebrating this great program that exists in our community. And thank you very much for all your hard work.
Catherine started it.
I would also like to agree with Dennis. It takes community, not just for the kids that are missing their parents, but there's kids out there that are well-to-do, that need a mentor and guidance also throughout the community. And as a family man, I just want to thank all of you that are standing up for the other kids in the community that don't, aren't as fortunate as others. Thank you.
So do we have a second?
We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, unanimously.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County hereby declares January 2019 as National Mentoring Month and January 31st, 2019 as Thank You Mentor Day. Thank you.
I'd prefer him come on up and take a photo with the... If there's anybody in this program that'd like to come up for the photo, please do.
So you got all squishy in. Okay, good deal. Ready? Everybody smile. One more time.
Are you photobombing?
Okay.
I'm trying to stay out of the photo. I saw her camera. No, I'm moving out of the way.
Item three is from First Five Calaveras. Adopt a proclamation recognizing the 20th anniversary of the California Children and Families Act, the County of Calaveras Children and Families Commission, known as First Five Calaveras and their partners.
Carrie, you want to come up?
Sure, thank you. Good morning. I'm Terri Lane, Executive Director of First Five Calaveras. Today, my team and I are excited to be recognizing the 20th anniversary of our organization. So 20 years ago, Proposition 10, the California Children and Families Act of 1998, was passed by California voters. This issued a tax on tobacco products to specifically fund services to young children ages zero to five in California. During these past 20 years, the scientific research regarding the human brain has come to the spotlight. It is now a known fact that the moment babies come into this world, their brains are forming at an incredible rate. They produce more than a million neuron connections every second. And what that means is that by the age of three, 80% of our brain is developed, that by age five, 90% of our brain is developed. I mean, that's huge, and that's all recent research. What this means is that babies are born to learn. Young children depend on their first teachers, their parents, their grandparents, their relatives, their caregivers, to help them develop the right skills to become independent and competent and to lead healthy, successful lives. These early years are a window of opportunity for each of us in the community to have a positive impact on a child's experiences. Child development specialists have produced research that shows that the environment of a child's earliest years can have effects that last a lifetime. The First Five team keeps all this in mind as we dedicate ourselves to providing support, services, and building systems in the community to aid in the strengthening and... I could not ask for a more competent team to work with, and I truly am grateful daily for that. On a personal note, I moved to Calaveras five years ago to accept this position with the First Five. And when I was starting, I heard the usual questions, will she like it here? Will she actually stay in the county? What will happen? And I can tell you that I absolutely love it. I cannot think of calling anything else home. I have found a place here because of the people I've met, that I feel so proud to be a part of. What I've found is that Calaveras is a very caring community. They come together, neighbors support each other, in times of need, there they are, strong and together, especially on behalf of young children, and that I do not take for granted. Last but not least, I would like to thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for your continual support these last 20 years. We always have a representative on the First Five Commission, and I would like to thank currently Supervisor Jack Garamendi for being a representative and for sharing your feedback and your wisdom with us. And now, I'd like to welcome Supervisor Ben Stoppa as our new alternate representative. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you in the near future. And again, thank you for recognizing our 20 years of service.
Thank you so much, Terri. I personally, as I mentioned when we were dividing up committee assignments the other week, this is one of my favorite committees to serve on. It is a program that you and your team lead, and every time I walk out of that, I feel like we've done good, and that is a wonderful feeling, and I agree with you, we are blessed to live in such a wonderful community. So, I get to read this proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing the 20th anniversary of the California Children's and Families Act. Whereas 20 years ago, the voters of California affirmed their support for funding dedicated to California children ages zero to five years old by passing the California Children and Families First Act of 1998. And whereas this act established the statewide program known as First Five to emphasize the importance of the first five years of a child's life when 90% of the brain development occurs. And whereas on December 14th, 1998, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognized the value of early childhood investments by establishing Calaveras County's Children's and Families First Commission, First Five Calaveras. And whereas the First Five Calaveras vision is that all Calaveras County children will enter school safe, healthy, and ready to learn. And whereas First Five's Calaveras mission is to facilitate partnerships and fund strategies that strengthen Calaveras County families and support them in raising healthy children aged zero to five. And whereas First Five Calaveras programs support a strengthening families approach, promoting the five protective factors that have been shown to increase family strength, enhance child development, and reduce the risk of child abuse and neglect, which are knowledge, relationships, communication, support, and resilience. And whereas First Five Calaveras through partnerships with the Calaveras Healthy, Health and Human Services Agency has provided the expansion of services to Calaveras County families with children up to age 18. And whereas more than 1,500 local families benefited last year through First Five Calaveras programs and partnerships. Whereas the continued investment in our youngest children and our youngest citizens remains a top priority, with much work to be left to do. Is there any public comment on this?
Hi, my name is Catherine Eustace, and I'm the Director of the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program and Director of Student Support Services for the Calaveras County Office of Education. I wanted to bring comment to this issue because I think that a lot of the people in Calaveras County don't realize the depth and breadth of the services and impact of First Five Calaveras. When I first came to the county and was starting the mentoring program and working for CCOE, I was also the chairperson of the Prevent Child Abuse Calaveras Council, and one of the biggest gaps in our community for services for families was parent education. There was virtually none, you would remember this, Marita, and it was an aching problem for the entire county. First Five Calaveras has taken up that call and developed an incredibly robust and effective template and menu of parent education programs that has woven itself into every aspect, everything from probation to, we use it for our grandparent project, they offer our grandparent projects support people, for the Community Action Council, for special education. I mean, they've woven this support into every aspect of agencies that support families and children, and they continue to do it. They never miss an opportunity to partner with other organizations. I had in my mind a bunch of other things that they do, but I don't want to take up too much time. I just had wanted to make that point, that while they are a strong organization in and of themselves, that they act as a support for almost every other action we take in our county to support families with small children, and they're extremely effective at doing it. They're the strongest partnership organization I've ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eustace. Any other public comments?
Let me, let me make, I have passed the gavel to Ms. Callaway because I would like to make the motion on this.
Okay. I'd like to call for a motion, please.
I would like to make a motion, and I, before I do it, I want to commend the staff one more time. The five women sitting there are more than just staff employees that run a program. They are deeply entwined in the fabric of this community. They live their work every day in their actions as volunteers in the community. I know them all individually as community members, and I get the privilege of working with them. I really want to commend them, and it is my great honor to make the motion to pass this resolution.
Before I call for the second, are there any comments from the board?
I also want to thank you for all your work. I recognize many of you throughout my years. Joyce, you babysitted me when I was eight years old in Moke Hill, so I'm glad you're still, glad you're still involved in the community, and we're happy to see you here. Rochelle, I remember you from school, you know, and when we both lived abroad, you know, good times. It's good to see you all here, it's great to have you all involved in our community. This is what family's about, First Five's about building the foundation of our future generations. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll second it if, unless Mr. Mills would like...
Fine. I have a motion by Super... Want to talk to?
Things are going sideways today. I'm recovering from...
Language change.
Yeah, so we'll give you a pass, but I don't know about the rest of it. Anyway, for you folks, I'd sure like to be a fly on the wall of what you know about this young gentleman.
All good?
No, it's all good. Yeah, it worked out well, didn't it?
Very well.
Thank you.
Obviously.
So, we appreciate your effort and standing tall for our young ones up to age five. It is a critical part of life, and oftentimes, up until the last 20 years, it's been just kind of set into the background. And so, the work that you're doing is appreciated. Sometimes it's not mentioned to you how much it is appreciated, but thank you for the work that you do.
Any other comments? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. You can have the...
Thanks. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras recognizes the 20th anniversary of the California Children's and Families Act, recommends, commends the Calaveras County Children and Families Commission, First Five Calaveras, and their partners in the effort to support and strengthen families of young children in Calaveras County. This motion passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of County Calaveras, State of California, this 22nd day of January, 1999. Thank you so much. 2019. Holy moly.
Should we come in here? You are. Yeah. Yes. Is it going to timeout on me? I'm going to take yours first. I'm going to take yours first. Okay, squishy in. Squishy in. There you go, that's better. Thank you. Wow, that's a good camera. Okay. Smile. One more. Okay, don't move. I don't have the microphone in it. Well, yeah, I do. It doesn't matter. Okay. Okay. I will humiliate mine that doesn't have this. Got it.
All right. Let's move on to public comment. Adam Clark.
General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Should we begin public comment? If you could line up five at a time, it'll help us keep track, and again, let's be respectful of each other. Bill?
Good morning, Board, and fellow citizens. My wife's not here today, she's expecting her second grandchild, and therefore she's working today because he's overdue. Anyway, I wanted to relate a story. Josh is still here. I called him a couple of months ago about the pool station road between the 1-2 Ranch and the pools, Circle 20, and Josh couldn't figure out where 1-2 Ranch was. He finally corrected me and told me that it was the Onito Ranch at the river there. That's why I failed Spanish, I guess. Anyway, I was very proud to see this board, look at some of the things, bring them back. I've been doing Common Ground, driving vets to the hospitals, Stanford, Livermore, Mather. So I haven't been able to be here on Tuesdays because Tuesday's one of the days that the veterans love to make appointments for vets, and you usually have to leave about 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning to get somebody to Stanford in time. Anyway, I was very concerned when I saw the last board meeting. I saw that a lot of people were very concerned about their property rights and freedoms and all of that when we were discussing the general plan, but then wanted to limit people's property rights and freedoms when it came to growing a plant. Anyway, that's nothing new around this place, is it? Anyway, gentlemen, thank you, and Marita, welcome. Congratulations, Ben, Jack, and Marita. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes former planning commissioner.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, members of the board. My name is Fawn McLaughlin, and I bring you good tidings from McCollum Hill. And I have a letter I'd like to read on their behalf. On behalf of the McCollum Hill Main Street Merchants Association and the community at large, we wish to thank you for hearing our pleas to remove the illegally parked double-wide trailers at the intersection of Highways 49 and 26. As a principal visual gateway to our historic community, the presence of the trailers in this location sent an unwanted and misleading message to visitors and locals about how we value our community. Gateways act as the front porch to a community. They're where visitors form their first impression as to what a community is like, and they are also the familiar and welcoming beacon to its residents, signifying to them that they are home. We understand that the removal of the trailers involves significant investment of limited county resources, including staff time and money, to physically remove them. We particularly wish to thank Courtney Minehart and Sabina Cable with code compliance for their dedication and commitment to this effort. In closing, we wish to again thank Jack Garamendi, District Supervisor 2 and now Chair, for his leadership and to you for listening, considering, and taking action to protect McCollum Hill's historic character and economic resilience. Respectfully, McCollum Hill Main Street Merchants Association, including Hotel Leger, Moke Hill Market, Petroglyph Gallery, McHale's Revival Shop, Moke Hill Nuts and Gifts, Renegade Winery, you'd never believe there'd be such a long list in Moke Hill, Old Enough to Know Better Antiques, JPM Realty, Appleseed Foreman Garden, Acme Art, Moke Hill, Whoops-a-Daisy, and Glass Doctor of the Gold Country. So, on all of their behaves, we thank you for hearing us. It was a huge deal to McCollum Hill, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to leave this with Diane.
Tom?
Tom and Vasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. The county can do more to avoid the 25 potentially significant impacts of the general plan update on the built-in natural environments. Fortunately, throughout the general plan update process, local people, regional organizations, and state agencies have been providing the county with lists of mitigation options to reduce these impacts. It is simply up to the Board of Supervisors to direct the planning department to properly tailor these programs for Calaveras County. For one example, adopting mitigation suggestions of the Agricultural Coalition would reduce the impacts from agricultural land conversion. For a second example, adopting historic preservation policies suggested by local experts would reduce impacts to historical and cultural resources. For a third example, conforming the circulation element policies to the 2017 Regional Transportation Plan developed by the Council of Governments will reduce impacts of the plan on truck safety, traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, and open space. For a fourth example, completing and adopting the Draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan developed by the County Parks and Recreation Commission would mitigate recreation impacts. For a fifth example, the existing community plans that are eliminated as part of the general plan update contain many measures that have mitigated impacts for years and could continue to do so. I could go on and on, but I think you get the point. Many different local and regional public agencies and private organizations and individuals suggested suitable mitigation measures to reduce the impacts of the general plan update. This reflects a broad understanding that adopting these measures will promote the broader public good in Calaveras County. The CPC encourages the board to adopt these measures when approved of the general plan update. Thank you.
Chuck?
Good morning, Board. Jack Norton, speaking on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. So, Tom went over the need to adopt certain mitigation measures, and I'd like to talk about some good news. It's that Calaveras won't have to finance these general plan programs all alone to reduce these impacts of development. The county can use state and federal funding to mitigate these impacts and to improve the county in the future. As an example, the Draft General Plan DEIR identifies potentially significant impacts to agricultural lands. However, if the general plan included an agricultural land component that was consistent with government code requirements for policy commitments, measurable objectives, and specific implementation measures, then the county would get priority and funding from the State Department of Conservation. conforming the circulation element policies to the 2017 Regional Transportation Plan developed by the Council of Governments will reduce impacts of the plan on truck safety, traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, and open space. For a fourth example, completing and adopting the draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan developed by the County Parks and Recreation Commission would mitigate recreation impacts. For a fifth example, the existing community plans that are eliminated as part of the general plan update contain many measures that have mitigated impacts for years and could continue to do so. I could go on and on, but I think you get the point. Many different local and regional public agencies and private organizations and individuals suggested suitable mitigation measures to reduce the impacts of the general plan update. This reflects a broad understanding that adopting these measures will promote the broader public good in Calaveras County. The CPC encourages the board to adopt these measures when approved the general plan update. Thank you.
Chuck?
Good morning, Board. Jack Norton speaking on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. So Tom went over the need to adopt certain mitigation measures, and I'd like to talk about some good news. It's that Calaveras won't have to finance these general plan programs all alone to reduce these impacts of development. The county can use state and federal funding to mitigate these impacts and to improve the county in the future. As an example, the draft general plan DEIR identifies potentially significant impacts to agricultural lands. However, if the general plan included an agricultural land component that was consistent with government code requirements for policy commitments, measurable objectives, and specific implementation measures, then the county would get priority and funding from the State Department of Conservation. In addition, the state currently has an agricultural land conservation program funded by cap and trade revenues. The USDA has over 30 programs providing loans, grants, and technical assistance to rural communities to improve their economic viability and thereby maintain their agricultural and forest lands in future production. These include grants for value-added producers, energy efficiency, community facilities, water supply and wastewater treatment, broadband services, and workforce housing. By actively participating in these great grant programs, the county can help keep Calaveras agriculture productive and competitive in the 21st century. As a second example, the DEIR identifies significant impacts associated with roads, traffic, and greenhouse gas emissions. However, some of these impacts could be mitigated if the county participated in the state's planning grant programs to promote sustainable communities and help communities adapt transportation systems to weather climate change. The identified projects could then seek funding through the Caltrans Local Assistance Program. Also, the DEIR indicated that the county will need to expand water and wastewater infrastructure to meet the needs of new development, but does not identify where the money will come from for these expansions. However, the state has at the Department of Water Resources an integrated water management grant program that provides bond funds to our region, including its disadvantaged communities, to maintain and improve water and sewer infrastructure. The county currently participates in this program, but the general plan update needs to commit to continue to seek these funds to meet these needs. Finally, I'll mention the DEIR identifies a significant impact associated with fire safety. CalFire administers grant programs to improve forest health, address tree mortality, and to promote fire safety in communities. The general plan update needs to commit to seeking these funds to meet local fire safety needs. And there's more regarding energy production, conservation funds, and wildlife habitat funds, just to name a few. Please commit to seeking these funds to help mitigate the impacts of development when you approve the general plan update. Thank you all.
Tom?
Good morning. Tom Griffin, also on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. During the general plan update, some folks have suggested the county must not participate in state and federal programs, being argued that by not participating in these programs, the taxes of our local residents would decline. However, there's no direct connection between the tax rate we pay in Calaveras and our participation in government programs. Calaveras taxpayers will not be sent a tax rebate check because Calaveras doesn't participate in these programs. The spending programs are already in the state and federal budgets. If the money's not spent in Calaveras, it gets spent somewhere else. People concerned with public spending are welcome to go to Sacramento and Washington DC to try to change the laws, to put those programs in place, and to reduce the spending on these programs, and good luck and Godspeed to them in that. However, as long as these state and federal programs exist, and as long as the spending is annually allocated to be spent somewhere, there's no benefit to Calaveras taxpayers by Calaveras not participating in these programs. The Department of Labor estimates the average American household pays about $5,700 in federal income taxes. The average Californian household pays an additional $4,888 in state and local taxes. Thus, the $17,713 households in Calaveras County pay a total of about $187 million in state, federal, and local taxes every year. By participating in the programs noted above, Calaveras County can get back some of the state and federal tax dollars and put them to good use in our communities. So with that in mind, I ask you to please commit to seeking these funds to help mitigate the impacts of the developments when you approve the general plan update. Thank you.
Neil McEwen, on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Compliance with SEQA at the general plan level can facilitate both economic development and environmental protection. By mitigating the significant environmental impacts of development at the general plan level, the county would expedite lawful future approvals of specific plans, subdivisions, and use permits. State law mandates the mitigation of impacts identified in the general plan that are likely to occur. Projects that require discretionary approval of specific plans, subdivisions, and use permits are all held to this same standard. Providing the option of compliance with standards that mitigate development impacts both facilitates project approvals while protecting health, safety, welfare, and the environment. Everyone benefits by knowing exactly what is needed to secure project approval. Businesses will find it less risky to invest in locating here when they can trust in the rule of law and property rights. Local taxpayers benefit because of the increased efficiencies in the county staff's project review and approval capacity. Concerns regarding community issues will be mitigated prior to conflict. The Planning Commission and the board of supervisors both stand to benefit because they will have informed lawful foundation -- excuse me, have the informed lawful foundation for guiding necessary choices required to approve housing and business development. Please look at the recommendation of one of the county's outside legal councils on land use in SEQA, James Moose, Senior Partner of Remy Moose in Manly. His guide indicates adopting clear language in a general plan can help streamline future project reviews and approvals. During this process, it has been argued that regulations and fees impede economic development. However, detailed plans and high-impact fees have not stopped economic development in the region. Eldorado County, despite having a detailed general plan and traffic impact mitigation fees of up to $13,000 per home from 2000 to '09, produced over 15,000 units of housing and 5 million square feet of non-residential job-generating land uses. Calaveras County has tried the virtually nonexistent regulation approach for decades. The result is a county with an average home value that is $150,000 below the statewide average. It is time for the county to try to specify development and impact mitigation standards to give all the members of this community hope for a vibrant future. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, are you waiting to give a public comment?
No.
All right. Is there anybody else doing public comment? Bonnie? All right. Bonnie will be the last speaker.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Beth, did you want to say something? Okay, Beth, you'll be the last speaker.
My name is Joyce Tekel. I'm a representative of myballadsprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Last week, Planning Director Peter Maurer used the term inevitable litigation in discussing the new general plan, and that caused me concern. I don't read many news articles dealing with lawsuits of general plans. For example, in recent years, San Joaquin County completed a general plan update with no reported lawsuits. The two suits I know of involved Eldorado County and Amador County. Both counties chose not to listen to public input. In Amador, the people sued, and Amador went to settlement. Amador paid the citizens' legal costs, lost a year, and ended up adopting the suggestions they offered before the lawsuit. As Tom Impacino told you last week, Mariposa listened, fixed their general plan, and there was no lawsuit. My friends and I have been trying to avoid a lawsuit in Calaveras County over the general plan for the last 12 years. Now we are told we will pass their general plan and fix it later. Really? Is Calaveras County willing to end up in court rather than produce a legally defensible plan? I don't believe the citizens of Calaveras will accept that. I don't. Litigation is not inevitable. Fix it. Now, I want to say one other thing. 1996 general plan, road impact mitigation fees. We joined the committees. Phil did. Joined the committees, worked for six years trying to get road impact mitigation fees in. We finally looked at each other and said, "They're not going to do it. We're going to have to sue." So we did. Phil asked me, "Do you want money?" I said, "No, you paid the last time." So we've shown up, but this county has not. And if you think you're going to pass this general plan, and it is not adequate or legally defensible, go ahead. Make my day.
Bonnie?
Good morning. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I assume you've all heard the phrase, "A chain is only strong as its weakest link." I'm using that metaphor to apply to human nature because man and women should be judged and could be judged by their worst attribute. Let's say, I'll give you an example. You've got someone in the neighborhood, and every time it snows, they come out with their blower, and they clear your driveway. You think that's a really great guy. What a great neighbor. But every night, he's beating his wife and abusing his children. How are you going to judge that person? I know how I'm going to judge him. And I'd like to bring that example to this forum here. Now, five of you sit up there. Some of you can sit up there for two years, smug, arrogant, self-righteous. You can even go to the point of creating that thing on the back wall. You all heard of the Hippocratic Oath? I call that the hypocrite oath. Someone sits up here for two years, acts a certain way, runs for reelection, doesn't win. You heard of the term "poor loser"? So they go out in the community, and they start badmouthing, insulting, disparaging people that they assume didn't support them. That's hypocritical. They sat here and said, "This is how we want people to act," but they don't believe it. Why are we held to a higher standard than all of you? And why is the common American held to a higher standard than that abomination in the White House? We're expected to be respectful and considerate, and we don't see that from our leaders or our leadership. It's hypocritical. It makes me angry. Something else that makes me angry is people that would lie to me or tell lies about me. I have no use for anyone like that. I have no respect. They have no integrity. They have no value, as far as I'm concerned. If we're going to promote a certain way of living or being or acting, we need to emulate it ourselves. And I've confessed that I'm a hypocrite. I'm a liar. I've been all those things. And that's why I can recognize it in other people. Thank you.
Is our last speaker, Beth?
Good morning. I've been out of town, and so this is my first opportunity to welcome the new reelected members to the board. Congratulations. I'm very concerned about my former neighbors in D2 who are struggling with no housing security. And I'm hoping that as we go forward with the general plan and we look at -- I hope we can find creative ways to get people back into their houses. And I would like to submit that there are certain elements of the county code that make it really difficult for people that don't have access to traditional financing. Specifically, it's my understanding that the sprinkler requirement in new housing is something that the county can opt out of. And I just want to share that during the Butte Fire, my partially-built house did not have sprinklers. My house was engulfed with smoke. The front of the house parts melted, but the house did not burn down. If I had had sprinklers in my house, it would have been a total loss. So I've got a relative, a close relative, who was in the insurance business forever. And when county started adopting the sprinkler regulation, he said that the insurance companies do not support this, that it is a bad idea because if the house doesn't burn, it's total loss for flooding. Another issue that I think that needs to be readdressed or looked at is composting toilets. They have really come a long way over the years, and it can cost upwards of $20,000 to get an engineered septic, or more in some of our locations. So I think that it's really important to help people rebuild by eliminating obstacles. So I would like for all of you to look into some of the ways that we can help people get out of fifth-wheel trailers, get out of tents during this terrible weather, stop being cited for living on their burned property, and, you know, let's have some compassion for people that are just hanging on by their fingertips. I mean, this is ridiculous that people are, you know, homeless on their property. I would also like to address Measure C, and that the voters spoke when they said that they wanted commercial cannabis taxed. The ban has not eliminated commercial cultivation. There continues to be illegal cultivation everywhere with no oversight. So I would really encourage the board to, as quickly as possible, help the people that have temporary licenses get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Move on to the consent agenda. And for the audience, we will be taking a break at 10:30.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any board members want to pull an item? Supervisor Mills?
Item two for a correction and item eight.
Sorry, Stephen?
Item two and item eight.
Item two.
No two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item four. My bad.
Four for minutes?
Minutes.
And eight?
Correct. Okay. Any other board members?
Seven.
Seeing none other. Any items from the staff to be pulled? Public? Seeing none. Move forward with the remainder.
I'll move the rest. Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toofenelli.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. Further discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Goes five all. All right. Item number four.
Just one moment, please. Item four. Minutes of board of supervisors' regular meeting held on January 8, 2019.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes. Only to make a correction. In the supervisor's announcements where the word "at" it says "Volunteer Fair" on Wednesday at the San Andreas Fire Station, I actually stated "across from," not "at." I didn't remember it was the town hall at the moment, and that was the reason for it.
Okay.
So it's just -- I will move the item with the correction.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toofenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair's five all. Item... Seven.
Item seven?
Item seven is from Public Works. "To adopt the plans and specifications for construction of the single-tree-drive-low-water-crossing conversion project, BR-NBIL 518, and authorize the Department of Public Works to solicit formal construction bids."
Supervisor Stopp?
I don't have any changes to this. I just would like to ask a question of Josh when it comes to our contracts and our ordinance. Do we have a local hire ordinance instated into that?
Morning, Chair Garamendi and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation. Supervisor Stopp, this contract does not have a local preference. It's a federalized contract. Federal law requires it not to have one of those. I'm not aware of a formal one that we have here locally, although we do try to, when we do prepare plans and specifications for projects, we try to make them as inclusive as possible to provide opportunities for local contractors, either as primes or as subcontractors. as possible to provide opportunities for local contractors, either as primes or as subcontractors to the prime. We have had similar projects in recent years go to local contractors. As a matter of fact, we finished one recently that went to a local contractor. We continue to do so, but as of today, we don't have a formal policy for local preferences. Yeah, so that, I haven't answered any questions you have about that.
Understood. With the federal money coming in, then it couldn't go to a local preference, but this is something maybe we can look at when we do our study session in February, possibly.
Yeah, absolutely. Supervisor Stopper, in the direction of the board, I'd be happy to bring this back and have that discussion. You know, it's an interesting topic. Most jurisdictions either have somewhat informal or don't have programs. The few, the few I'm aware of that do, they're carefully crafted. And the thing is, there's a balance between the need to have opportunities for local inclusion with pricing, using local funds and in particular taxpayer funds, the need to make sure we balance those, as well with some larger, more complex projects. Sometimes the expertise doesn't necessarily exist within the county. So if we did go down that path, we could certainly move towards that. I would work closely with county council to establish a plan, but that option remains open to the board.
Thank you for answering the questions. Would it be all right if I pulled the board, if we could possibly add that to consideration for the February study session when it comes to public works?
I...
Got the comment, then we can do that.
Okay.
Supervisor.
My understanding is if it's federal or state money, we have to follow several federal or state rules. We cannot impose a local hiring preference. We did have, if it was a local project, paid for with local tax money, we had a 3%, Mr. Tofanelli, was that, or five? A 3% or 5% spread between, in the bid process. So if it's with Calaveras' tax money, we could do it. If it's with state or federal money, we cannot do it unless...
Depending on what it is with the state, but yes, most definitely the federal. I concur with you. Yeah.
We certainly, and I apologize for my lack of knowledge. It's pretty infrequent these days that we have enough local funding to do local projects, so most of our projects are done federally. But if that exists, we would certainly continue to adhere to that. So what I would recommend is, let me go back with my staff. Let's find out what our actual requirement is for local. I can then report back out to you, and based on those comments, I'll work directly with the chair to determine if this needs to come back to the February meeting.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Josh, you can start. I believe this whole issue came up, it's been many times in the past, but when it came before this board, in, I think it was 2009, it was, we were just beginning the jail project, and there was a lot of other remediation work that needed to be done. And those contracts were through our local funds that we could apply that. So if you go back to look, you might start in 2009 to what was done, to which Marita is talking about, but it had to do with the jail project when we passed something. Thank you.
I would like to, I think Supervisor Stopper has a good point. I certainly, this isn't a topic we're taking up today, but when we bring it back in February, I think it'd be good to discuss, because we do have some entirely county-funded projects on the way, and we should take a look at what the preference is, because those are dollars that stay in our community. And since they're our dollars, it's nice to keep circulating in our towns. So we can bring that back and talk about it. If there's interest on behalf of the board, is there? Is there? Yes. Okay, I sense consensus here amongst the board. When we talk next time, let's put that on part of the topics. Is there a motion?
Before we move to a motion?
Oh.
To make a point to the polling, is to be sure that it is a broad enough discussion that we can include, maybe shared, where you have more than one contractor getting together with another local contractor to build enough volume that they can actually perform the project. So I just want to be sure that we don't tie ourselves into, let's look at the policy as a whole, not just a piece of it.
Yeah, I concur.
Sounds good. Excuse me, public comment, Al?
Thank you, Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. You know, it's good to, for our local contractors to have plenty of work and be supported, but when we're in a position of actually working for the taxpayer, we have to think about what's best for the taxpayer and the public. And when we allow a local contractor to take precedent over a contractor that's not local, who would provide a better service at a lower price, we're hurting the public. This is no big favor for that contractor. What about our local contractors that want to go work in Amador or Tuami County and are good? And those counties reject them or penalize them, actually penalize them, their own people. Do you see the injustice of this? It's wrong. It violates our competition, and we don't get the best services for our money. And so if we put this on the discussion agenda, the agenda for study sessions, I think we need to balance that conversation a little bit so that we can protect the public. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, is there a motion or further comments from the board?
Just a real quick comment to that. The way I understand it, local hire ordinance isn't necessarily subject to the contractor as much as they need to hire employees locally.
Okay. Is there a motion?
And we do have great contractors locally, I can assure you.
We do. I think we all agree on that, and we've all watched plenty of dollars leave our county.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve. It's in my district.
Motion, Supervisor Mills, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five oh. Item number eight.
Item eight is from Public Works, "To authorize the board chair to execute an improvement agreement between Calaveras County and De Nova Homes to guarantee completion of off-site improvements associated with tentative subdivision tract map 93-535 Copper Hills subdivision."
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item?
Yes, the purpose of pulling it wasn't so much to have an in-depth discussion about the project itself. I appreciate De Nova Homes' effort in stepping up and wanting to move forward and getting these infrastructure pieces completed, but more to have maybe Mr. Pack explain the purpose of the fencing or the gates that are currently in place. I know constituents in the Copper Meadow subdivision have come to me about the gate. There's some in Copper Hills as well. My only concern initially was, in an emergency evacuation situation where you have only one exit out of Copper Meadow, could that be used as an emergency evacuation route? Those are the kind of things that I think were paramount, but I think that the public needs to know why those gates are there, and from that, then they can, it just helps the community to better understand.
Sure. So, good morning again, board, Chair Guaramendi, members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack, again, your Public Works Director. So really quick, before going into the gate that's been there, really briefly about the project, it's located on O'Burn's Ferry Road, near Copper Cove Drive. The entire project is about 28 acres, divided into about 125 residential lots. The original project was approved by the Planning Commission in 1994, amended in 2003. The final map was approved by the board with a subdivision improvement agreement that ties improvements to the future subsequent to the development of the recording of the final map. Now, most of the onsite improvements have been completed. There still remain some minor offsite improvements, in particular, on O'Burn's Ferry that need to get done. However, late last week, I was forwarded an email from Supervisor Mills regarding concerns regarding the gate that's in place. So the gate's been there, based on Google Map and imagery, it looks like it's been there sometime between June 2010 and June 2011, so it's been there for quite some time. My staff did reach out to the developer. The developer is here today to answer any additional questions you may have. According to the developer, that, those fencing provides protection from the improvements from being vandalized. In addition, there was some evidence of local neighbors utilizing that site. Their site is their, quoted by the developer, is their personal off-road park. As a result, the developer was highly concerned about liability resulting from that activity. So the gating was put up. The developer is committed and fully committed to removing the construction fencing and opening the road once construction activity begins on these phases of the project. From our side, the road is private, so Public Works has a little jurisdiction over this due to the private nature of the road. So with that said, the developer may be able to answer more about the gate. It is a, I think it's a six or eight-foot-high chain-link fence, cyclone-style fence, six-foot. Sure, he could speak a little bit more into the ease of removing in case of emergency, although I do want to reiterate the concerns of the developer regarding legal trespassing on the property.
Thank you, Josh, for the summary. And I know that Copper Fire District is here as well, and this is something that I've had a little bit of a discussion with them about as well. And I don't see that the off-road activity is totally a negative. It might speak to an opportunity for the community to find a place that our young folks can use as an off-road area, because we have another spot down there on the corner of O'Burn's Ferry and Copper Cove Drive in the southwest corner that is being used the same way. And so, you know, people are going to be doing wherever they can, and trespassing sometimes is one of the things that happens. But I just want to express to De Nova Homes how much I appreciate they're willing to step up and finally move this forward, get it completed, and help make that area look and feel better as a community.
Any further questions from the board? Supervisor.
Just some comments, and Marita knows this, this is not the first time this has come before the board. It was in 2011 or '12 it came before the board, asking for him to move the gate, and the same comments he made now, and the same comments he made back then, when he was asked to open that up for access. So if he hasn't completed it, I don't think his stance is going to change. And obviously, if you spoke to him, it hasn't, so...
Any public comment?
Hi, Joel Schwartz, Copperopolis Fire Protection District. I took a drive around the community to take a look at this fence, to see what it was, and it's a gate on Copper Crest Drive, which actually separates the Copper Meadows unit from the Copper Hills unit. And as a result, there's only one road in and one road out to both of the developments. And I would urge the developer to please put a Knox box on it, so we don't have to drive through it and break it down, but it would be better if it could just be removed, because it really is a hazard. Any questions?
Further public comment?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. We seem to have a sort of conflict between public benefit and private property rights. I like the idea of developers providing security for their development. It helps them sell the homes, because people want to buy homes where they're more secure. And in times of civil turmoil, they'd like to be, they'd like to have gates there so that they don't become victims. Now, it seemed like there might be a simple solution, and it was already mentioned, that a simple method of unhinging the gates in times of emergency, it could be some lever or something that could be done fairly inexpensive, that would take care of the emergency exit, but at the same time, provide that gate there and the security. It seems to make sense. Thank you.
Further comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Mills?
I'll make a motion to move the item. I just wanted to be sure we had an open discussion, and the public was fully aware of what that situation was, so we don't keep beating a dead horse. That was the goal.
I'll second it.
Moved by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Tofanelli. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay. Before we begin the regular agenda, we will take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back, so appreciate your patience. Thank you very much. Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors' meeting. We'll begin the regular agenda with item number 14. Madam Clerk?
Item 14 is from Health and Human Services, "To receive a presentation by First Five Calaveras on the programs and services they provide in Calaveras County."
Okay, thank you. Once again, I'm Terry Lane, Executive Director of First Five Calaveras. As part of the Health and Human Services Agency, part of our strategic plan is to improve outreach to the community. And so by doing so, we are giving board presentations every quarter. So it's our turn. And we are proud that, in recognition of our 20th anniversary, the First Five team has put together this slideshow for you that gives a brief outline of our history and progress, and also features highlights from our current programs and details from the 2017-18 annual report. Amy is going to start us off.
Twenty years ago, California voters passed Proposition 10, creating a tax on tobacco products to fund programs that improve the health, welfare, and school readiness of the state's youngest children, and establishing First Five California. The Calaveras County Board of Supervisors affirmed their support by passing Urgency Ordinance Number 2566, December 14, 1998, creating the Calaveras County Children and Families First Commission, otherwise known as First Five Calaveras. First Five Calaveras' mission is to facilitate partnerships and fund strategies that strengthen families and support them in raising healthy children ages zero to five, so that all Calaveras County children will enter school safe, healthy, and ready to learn. Thirteen years ago, we were able to hire our first program coordinator, and we also became an agency of the Calaveras County. Ten years ago, we became the fiscal agent for Prevent Child Abuse Council Calaveras, and established an MOU with CalWorks and Human Services to hire a prevention coordinator, allowing us to expand services to strengthen families with children of ages zero to 17 years old. Eight years ago, we were awarded Proposition 63, Mental Health Service Act Prevention and Early Intervention Grant Funds from Calaveras County Behavioral Health to provide county-wide parent education coordination to families with children ages zero to 17. Four years ago, we became a division of Calaveras County Health and Human Services, following the merger of Health Services, Public Health, and Behavioral Health with Calaveras Works and Human Services, further solidifying our partnerships to strengthen Calaveras County The five protective factors, resilience, relationships, knowledge, communication, and support, have been shown to increase family strengths, enhance child development, and reduce the risk of child abuse and neglect, serve as the foundation of the strengthening
First Five Calaveras consists of a collaboration of three funding sources. In the first column, you will see the First Five Proposition 10 monies that fund services for children birth through five and support for their families. In the second column is a partnership with Calaveras County Behavioral Health, using funds from Prop 63, the Mental Health Services Act, allowing us to expand services to children through the age of 17. And the third column is our collaboration with child abuse prevention funding to also serve families with children through age 17. First Five has four areas of focus, the first being improved child health. We have four programs that we fund in this We have four programs that we fund in this category. Building Healthy Kids, Families, and Communities. This is a hands-on program that reaches children in local preschools and transitional kindergarten classes. Sharing healthy nutrition lessons and the construction of school gardens for the sustainability of healthy eating habits. There's also the Children's Dental Project, one of our longest-funded services, in which preschool children receive dental screenings, cleanings, fluoride varnish, and oral health education. In a county that has minimal dental providers that accept dental care and that has transportation barriers, we have found this to be a priority health service. We also have the Kids Farmer's Market. It's a nutrition program reaching out to local preschools, in which children use fresh produce to create nutritious meals, and they take those ingredients and recipes home to share with their families. Children participate in their own mini farmer's market, and they take home a 20-pound bag of fresh fruits and vegetables from the food bank. We also have the Safe Self Program, which delivers interactive, fun lessons to local preschoolers focused on personal safety and self-awareness. And then, parents also learn safety skills and strategies to use at their home. The second focus area is improved family functioning. We have three services in this area. First is the Raising a Reader Home Visitor, in which an early childhood specialist is able to go into a young child's home and work one-on-one with the parents to help increase school readiness skills and provide any needed resources and support. This is available to families that have barriers in enrolling their child in a local preschool or childcare program. The second program is the Court Appointed Special Advocates of Calaveras, also known as CASA. These dedicated volunteers work with some of our most vulnerable population, advocating for young children that have been victims of abuse and neglect in our dependence of the court. This new program, Calaveras, helps improve child well-being and gives a voice to the young ones that cannot defend themselves. The third activity that helps improve and strengthen family function is the wide realm of parenting classes that are offered to all parents throughout the county. The third focus for First Five is improved systems of care. We offer many grants for community activities that strengthen families. These include early literacy grants through each of our libraries, community events such as Kids Stay in the Garden, physical activity grants for preschoolers, and this year, we added support for playgroups for young children. An additional early learning support has been the creation of Little Free Libraries throughout the county. Last year, we added six locations for a total of 16. And they're in every district, and you can find the map with the specific locations on our website. Last year, we distributed over 1,700 new books to young children through the Little Free Libraries and community events. In 2017-18, First Five Calaveras served 1,364 undupicated children, zero to five years old. There's approximately a little over 2,100 young children that age in the county, so you can see that we are able to have impact on a wide variety of children. And we also, we're servicing 696 adults. Now, Rochelle, we'll talk to you about our fourth area of focus, improved child development.
My name is Rochelle Sweet, and I'm a program coordinator for First Five. In the focused area of improved child development, First Five has been the lead agency for this county's QRIS, which is a quality rating and improvement system. Our QRIS consortia, Strong Start Calaveras, consists of many early learning and support agencies focused on enhancing the quality of early learning sites in our community. High-quality early learning programs have a lifelong impact on young children and their families. These programs help increase school readiness, social-emotional development, parent and family engagement, and improves health and cognitive development for these young children. We offer incentives for staff to attend trainings, further education, and set and reach site-specific goals. We've given out almost $90,000 in site and staff incentives in the 1718 year. We enrolled 15 early learning sites, with that number almost doubling this year. So far, a couple of our enrolled sites have already moved up on their tier-rating scale, showing improvement in their sites in just a short time. Our goal is to provide ongoing support to early learning professionals in our community. With the collaboration from all agencies in the consortia, we hope to provide a sustainable and quality system of care for our young children in Calaveras. You should have some brochures that give a little more information on this. Now, I'd like to bring Joyce up to speak on our MHSA services.
Good morning. Joyce Peak, Program Coordinator, First Five Calaveras. And for the past nine years, with funding through the Mental Health Service Act, Prop 63, First Five Calaveras has provided no-cost parent education classes, training for professionals, parent counseling classes, classes for our Spanish-speaking families, and for fathers who are incarcerated. Last year, we offered 73 training sessions, with 445 parents and professionals benefiting directly, and that's been a consistent number through the past nine years. The classes take place on elementary school campuses and include meals and childcare, which is extremely critical for families who work both inside and outside of the home. We try to set the stage for success for our families here. We contract with eight facilitators, utilizing our local expertise on topics such as mindful parenting, health and nutrition, co-parenting, and that is to name a few. Our parents drive the process. They tell us through our evaluation what they want more of and what they want less of. We have also offered large, community-based conferences that focus on building trauma-informed communities, bringing nationally-known experts to our county, Dr. Bruce Perry, Steve Grainer, and Howard Glasser. These are people who inspire us as a community on how we can better serve families and children in our county. In 2015, the Mindful School Project was started at West Point Elementary School. This is a brain-based science approach that provides strategies to help kids focus, calm down, resolve conflicts, and respond with empathy and kindness. And I've actually brought these books, if you would, please. I brought these special books, who were made by staff and students at West Point Elementary, to share with you, because I think kids and teachers really, really tell the best story. Thank you for your time.
I'm Robin Davis, and I'm a First Five Program Coordinator. I work with community partners and collaborate within our Sierra Sacramento region to implement best practices to prevent child abuse and neglect. I lead PCAC, which is the Prevent Child Abuse Council Calaveras, with eight dedicated council members. They represent parent volunteers, human health and human services, early childhood and youth programs, and school districts. Donations to the Calaveras County Children's Trust Fund support the work of the council. I'm also part of a team that supports children who have experienced abuse. We help the family to become stronger, more resilient, and secure. Armed with knowledge and a positive support system, a clean and sober mother said, "I can finally be present with my child," and the result is a safe, secure, and happier child. With a referral from Child Protective Services, I work with parents and caregivers to ensure that each child in the critical first five years receives a screening for social, emotional, and developmental needs. Of these young children, nearly half require services to address trauma and developmental Children from birth to age five are the most vulnerable, because they can't thrive without our care. They comprise the largest number of referrals, 37% to CPS in our county. The Welcome Baby Program served 115 parents with knowledge of parenting and child development. And the Safely Surrendered Baby Program designated in five of our fire stations, and the hospital emergency room protects against infant abandonment. Child abuse prevention means reaching families before a crisis occurs and a child is harmed, reaching them where they are in our county and where they may access information through schools, agencies, businesses, clinics, and events. Each April, Prevent Child Abuse Council works to strengthen our community's response to child abuse. This year, we'll host the Third Annual Light of Hope, where you'll hear personal stories of adversity, hope, and healing in the Master Gardeners Demo Garden on April 3. And our campaign, Be the One, reinforces that every child is one caring adult away from being a success story. The Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program, who was here earlier, is really a shining example of that, about the connection that we have with young people. Each of us can be the one to transform a child's life. Thank you.
An investment in young children is an investment in our future. As you know, Prop 10 funding is based on a tax for tobacco products. As California residents are becoming healthier, they're actually smoking less, and that is a great thing overall. However, for us, it does mean a reduction in the amount of funding each county receives for their local First Five agency. We currently receive what is called a small-county augmentation, which helps small counties keep their funding at a base level. We have this until June of 2021, and after that, it's uncertain if it will continue. So, don't be surprised, because we keep you posted on what will be happening with our funding. We would like to thank each one of our community partners that we have collaborated with over the past 20 years. We thank them for their innovation and their commitment to help better the lives of the young children in Calaveras. And then, thank you to our commissioners and to you, the Board of Supervisors, for keeping the needs of our youngest population at the forefront as you make decisions in this county. As far as our timeframe, to keep it short, if you would like further information about our programs, please check our website at firstfivecalaveras.org. That is it. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. I think you brought up a good point, is we need to be mindful from our side of your expenditures and where are we going to get the funding if we're going to keep this going after 2021. So, that's something we should be thinking about even now, not so much waiting until that bomb hits us, so to speak.
Thank you. We are thinking of that.
But it's something that we need to have, is a continual conversation between now and then, so we can understand how we start building up that differential and providing the proper support.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stoffer?
I agree with Supervisor Mills, and to fall back on our comments from earlier, this is a foundation for a starting point of our future generations that we will be relying on soon. So, thank you for all the work you do. We appreciate it.
This is not accident, but is there any public comment?
Yes, I have some. We need money. They need money. Guess what? We have Measure C. This board could just use state licensing and have tax money rolling in by June. $13 million. You spin every dime of it, you could spend it again. You could help these people in 2021, or 1999, whichever.
We're partying like it's 1999.
Rep. Randall Smith, District 4. I want to commend everybody involved with First Five. I'm really super happy to see this report today. It's one of the many great things going on in the county that we all know are going on here. And I have a special place in my heart for First Five, because my organization in San Diego, we had a preschool, and San Diego First Five granted us $174,000 for equipment, bought a playground, HVAC system, fire alarm system, and lots of furniture and all kinds of things. It really allowed our organization to provide a fabulous learning environment to our families and their kids. So, I'm thrilled to see that First Five is here and contributing to the community. A lot of people don't know that Rob Reiner, the actor, was one of the people behind the initiative 20 years ago, and I'd like to offer a quick shout-out to my friends Teresa and Diane in Sacramento, who helped him get that passed now, back in 1998. So, anything that could be done in the future to keep this program going, I completely agree with Supervisor Mills and Stoffer. I think everybody will. We got to make sure that we get the funding to keep this program going in a couple of years. So, congratulations. Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
House of Commerce Taxpayer Association. I was quite impressed. Also, I was impressed with the way that the graphics could turn into a curtain, and a curtain would open up, and there'd be another curtain. That's really amazing. One of the things that is concerned for me is that younger people, if they survive on the horrible environments that they go through, would develop into responsible adults. And by I mean responsible adults, they understand the basic morality in a civilization. And basically, it's this: Do as you have agreed and respect the rights of others. It's very simple, but sometimes this is woven in kindergarten and in school, and it's a good thing, because the person, when they get in charge of their own life, is more accountable, more responsible, and less likely to be dependent upon others, or even depend upon the government. For heaven's sake, we don't want that. And so, anything that's done along those lines of character-building, our taxpayer group really supports. Thank you.
If you intend to make public comment, please get in line, otherwise I will assume that, Patricia, you are our final speaker on this.
I love children. I have five over a period of 19 years, and I believe the first five years are very important, and I appreciate what you all do. I feel very concerned for the ones, the children that are unborn or yet to be conceived. And one of the reasons I'm very concerned is that alcohol and other drugs, including marijuana, can cause birth defects and cause a child to be handicapped the rest of its life, or die before it gets born. And I personally feel that it's a very serious thing to be considered. I think that children deserve to be educated about the, what can happen as a result of their use of drugs. And I understand with marijuana that you're supposed to not have any children for six months, until you've not used marijuana for six months, because it can have a detrimental effect, and it can cause severe birth defects. And I believe that the children need to know this as they're growing up. I don't know whether you guys have that program to help them know how serious it can be if they use marijuana and they get pregnant. And this includes both sexes, because males have to not use marijuana for six months, too. That's the recommended amount of time not to use it before, you know, they, I don't know the right words. But anyway, I really think that it- But anyway, I really think that it's a very serious situation, and I don't think people are paying attention to it. And like I said, I have five children over a period of 19 years. I know a little bit about trying to take care of yourself before you get pregnant, trying to take care of yourself after you get pregnant. And, you know, six months of being very careful might not work, and I think it's a terrible tragedy, and I...
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank First Five for coming. Thank you very much, Teri.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Move on to item 15.
Item 15 is from the Economic Development Department to authorize the county administrative officer to execute and administer the California Complete Count Census 2020 Education and Outreach Agreement.
Good morning, Chair Garmendi. Honorable Supervisors, Kathy Galino from Economic Development. Before you today, you have the ability to authorize our county administrative officer to either execute an agreement with the state to conduct the education and outreach efforts for our county in Census 2020 outreach, especially given that there are some hard-to-count communities. The state, the Complete Count California, California Complete Count, has reached out directly to each county. There's three choices before you. The first is for us, the county, to accept the $50,000 that's allocated to Calaveras and do the education outreach ourselves. The second is to accept the $50,000 in the agreement and to work with other organizations, community-based organizations, and possibly contract out with them on some of the education outreach efforts. And the third, of course, is to not accept the agreement and not accept the $50,000 for education outreach, in which case the state will try to reach out to other community-based organizations. So the importance of Census 2020, the census is coming, the census is coming, is that it provides about $1,950 per person, per completed census ballot, and over the course of 20 years, that's about $20,000 per person, significant amount of money, federal funding for public safety, for roads, for children's programs, education, for a whole host of things to the county. It's very important that we get these numbers, that they're accurate, and that actually the number-one underrepresented group are those five and under. So we're going to be working very hard to make sure that those communities are counted in all of our districts. So with that, I will ask for any questions or...
Any questions from the Board? Supervisors?
Thank you, Chair. That is a concern, that if we were to do this internally, what is our capacity to do it? And wouldn't we be better served to taking this to our community-based organizations, who probably would have a better capacity or ability to handle the depth of the project? Because it is quite extensive to be able to walk door-to-door in some cases and do these surveys.
Very good question. Yeah, we, I believe, have capacity. I have reached out to some community-based organizations. This came about fairly quickly to my department. So talked to the Chamber, talked to ATCA, other community groups, libraries, and so forth. So as part of the county's obligation, we would automatically reach out. There's no way that we have staff for one person to do all this. So it would be a collaborative effort. In looking at the budget and actually backing out of it, so the first part that would be required is the strategic plan. They have a line-item allocation. I believe it's $5,000 to complete that. Then there's quarterly reports. There's no specific format. Being that we're a fairly small county, I think it would be manageable to be able to keep track of the organizations and the groups that we reach out to. They do provide volunteers. The federal government will actually hire census workers on our behalf. The $50,000 is specifically for education and outreach, so it's not necessarily going out door-to-door. The federal government is looking at doing more of an electronic reporting system this time, so it's going to be key that we work with our libraries, since they have connectivity to a lot of parts of our county that don't have internet broadband services, and maybe potentially putting up some kiosks. So, and we are, there's quite a bit of volunteers in our county that are wonderful, and I know this is going through the point-in-time count with the homeless that's going on this week. So I think we have a lot of faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, our Chamber, our business associations, and we can get the word out effectively.
I just want to be sure that we're not creating a duplication of effort and that there is going to be someone being the tip of the spear, so to speak, and coordinating all of this internally or externally, but that everybody's going to want to be involved. We just want to be sure that they're not overlapping each other and doing duplicate work on the same thing for the same result.
Absolutely.
That is my only point. Supervisor Stoppa?
So the $50,000 is just the base for that initial outreach as we proceed, and then potentially there's more in the future through different avenues to help facilitate these people going out and working with you, whether it be an outside group and so on?
So the $50,000 is from start to finish. So that will be from the strategic plan to the implementation and the survey being conducted, and then the follow-up. The federal government has funding, I don't know about now because of the shutdown, and actually the census page is on hold. So they typically have stipends for volunteers that get paid to actually do the door-to-door. That would not be something I'm responsible for or that the county would be responsible for if we agree. It would be for the education and outreach component.
Understood. Thank you. CAO, do you have any comments on this? Is she in your office?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, no. Our recommendation, again, is that you authorize us to work with the local community organizations to implement this. As Ms. Galindo has just indicated, the actual census will be done by employees of the federal government. The government, the federal government will actually hire them to do the census, but we just want to get the word out so everyone is aware of it.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? Seeing none, we go back to the Board. Is there any motion or further discussion?
Well, there was a discussion about three options here, and I think that based on what the CAO has had, based on what Galindo said, the second option seems to be the most viable one at this juncture. So I would move that we accept the second option and allow the staff to move forward as quickly as possible.
Motion by Supervisor Mills for the second option, which is to, CAO, to work with outside organizations to put this deal together. Your second?
I'll second it. Kathy, I do have a couple of questions for you. And I'm in agreement that the second option looks to be the best way for us to go. But this outreach program is kind of an extension of what you've already been doing for the past week in training to go out for the homeless census. This is to get people available for the government to hire for the census program. Is that not right? In order to get them trained, and then they'll be eligible, when the federal government comes in to take the census, that these group of people that have gone through this training through this program will be eligible for the hire?
It could be. The point-in-time count is a separate project that I'm doing through Calaveras Leadership, and so I've made good connections. So obviously, those people would be some of the first-line people I would reach out to again. This is a different format. There is a website where if you're interested in becoming a census worker, it's not working right now because of the federal government shutdown, sorry, that they can sign up to be a volunteer. But yes, to answer your question, yes, it's part of a greater connection and reaching out to our community.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Mills, a second by Supervisor Tofanelli for the second option. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie's 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, yeah, you guys don't need to... Sorry, you got stranded.
Thank you.
Stranded at the island table. Held it together. Item 16.
Item 16 is from the Planning Department. To conduct a public hearing, find that the project is exempt from CEQA and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 17.66 regarding accessory dwelling well requirements and authorize summary publication.
Good morning, Peter Mauer, Planning Director. This is really just a quick cleanup item. Last July, we adopted an ordinance amending our requirements for accessory dwellings to be in compliance with state law, as well as to streamline the process, to expedite and reduce the cost for accessory dwellings. What we realized in the beginning of implementation, based on input from the well-drilling industry, is that the requirements for the accessory dwelling well is more stringent than for primary residence well. So this amendment would just address that one issue. Essentially, it eliminates a rather lengthy drawdown testing requirement that doesn't actually do what it is intended to do based on the time, the amount of water that's drawn down. And so, and since that's not required of a primary residence, we didn't feel that it was really necessary. So this amendment would just simply require that the homeowner be responsible for making a determination of whether or not they felt that it was sufficient water supply. They would, any well still needs to meet the water quality testing requirements of the Health Department, the Environmental Health Department, and so we are recommending that you adopt this ordinance. The Planning Commission reviewed this in December and had recommended approval of this ordinance. Do you have any question of me?
Questions from the Board? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
Al Segal, Taxpayer Association. Wow, reducing bureaucracy. That's incredible. Getting more efficient, protecting the property owner. This is good news. I hope you vote for it.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Need further discussion or motion?
I'll move this aside, Mr. Chair.
Second by Supervisor Stoppa. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0, because we already had further discussions. On to number 17.
Item 17 is from the Public Works Department to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works and Transportation to perform emergency work upon county roads in accordance with Public Contract Code 20395E.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works, and today we're asking you to consider and potentially adopt a resolution authorizing the Director to perform emergency work on county roads in accordance with the Public Contract Code. So the Public Contract Code allows the Board to authorize the Director of Public Works to have any work upon county highways done under his or her supervision and directed in accordance with that section. This particular resolution that we're asking you to consider today would authorize the Director to perform emergency work that includes purchasing materials and procuring contracts without advertising for bids, when the estimated cost necessity to this emergency work exceeds $25,000 and the public interest and necessity demands immediate action to safeguard life, health, and property. Now, with recent emergencies in our past, the Butte Fire and the 2017 storms, and the likelihood of future emergencies that could impact public safety, granting the authority to the Director gives the Director and Public Works greater ability to quickly and effectively respond to emergencies affecting county roads that could impact public safety. Now, one thing I want to highlight is that emergencies are not necessarily in black and white. There is a wide spectrum of emergencies from a very basic maintenance versus the worst calamity and an emergency. And I don't think you're going to see a lot of argument on either side. However, a lot of times, the, an emergency can be, we don't know the shape and size of that. A good example is Main Street and Milk Hill over the weekend. The original calls we got was the chance that the whole road was falling. We quickly responded. It turned out to be a small sinkhole. We think we've got that stabilized, but that just highlights the fact that when we deal with emergencies, we don't know what we get into until we get into it. And so there is, the one concern I have bringing this to you today, as someone who is a steward and a defender of taxpayer rights and taxpayer dollars, is the oversight that the Board has on this resolution and the potential for this to be potentially misused or abused, even under the very best of intentions. As a result, the thing that I have recommended as part of this resolution and to maintain transparency and accountability is that if any action is taken by the Director underneath this disguise or underneath the resolution, the Director is required to come back to the Board at a later date to provide a report to the Board for feedback. So this ensures that the Board can regularly revisit the policy, provide feedback on how it's being used, as well as staff on its interpretation and implementation. Again, I have, the recommendation today is to authorize the resolution or approve the resolution authorizing the emergency work. However, I do appreciate there are a number of nuances and questions that need to be asked, both by the Board and the public. So with that said, that ends my brief presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the Board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Josh, I'm reading the discussion summary that you have here, and I have a couple of questions. One, in the very first paragraph, it says county highways. Should that not also say byways and...
It's Supervisor Tofanelli, it's a little bit of semantics. A highway is defined in the Highway Code as a road, so it could be highways and byways. I'm...
Okay.
Yeah, but...
I'm asking you, you're the expert, so...
What's that?
I'm asking you, you're the expert, so...
Okay. I think that covers the needs of what we, our needs.
It talks about emergency road work. Does it include other emergencies outside roads, such as if you had some work that needs emergency done on bridges or other items that have to do with if you have flooding at areas that affects other things that are county property or county right-of-way that aren't roads, or this is just specifically damage to roads?
Supervisor Tofanelli, it does cover, it could potentially cover bridges and other infrastructure related to roads. Regarding property, it does specifically say roads, so the idea of this was, the idea of this was to give me authority. I have authority over the road and infrastructure of the property adjacent to the road. So when we're talking like, for example, parks or facilities, things like that, this wouldn't necessarily provide that. I may look to Council to provide additional feedback if I'm incorrectly interpreting that, but the way I, the way it was interpreted was it would limit that to potential impacts to county roads and pertinent structures.
Sarah Dekay, Deputy County Counsel. Yeah, I think Josh is correct. This is something that permits him, in the event of an emergency that affects county roads broadly defined, including the right-of-way and things that could fall into onto the road. It gives him the ability to, in an emergency, enter into contracts that fixes those things and allows county residents to continue using the roads as quickly as possible. It wouldn't affect county facilities beyond the purview of, you know, public works road. You'll note that the section actually references the Road Commissioner. In Calaveras County, our Road Commissioner is the Director of Public Works, but this is tied to roads and transportation.
And I would add to that, that as the Director of Public Works, my purview isn't necessarily on facilities and other public property not related to roads, so I'm not sure I am the appropriate person to have that authority to perform that work.
Well, and I agree with you, and I guess I misstated my intention of what I was meaning. If we have instances that had to do with the county government's parking lot, it's not a road, it's a parking lot, and it became flooded and needed repairs, emergency repairs to get in and out, or even the yards back here or landfill sections that you are responsible for, does it include emergencies in those areas that aren't specifically roads, but they are under your purview, that flood or whatever have a disaster that needs some work done to them? I'm just trying to see where this is...
Yeah, yeah, it's an onion that gets peeled when you get into the intricacies of it. So the roads and like, for example... So, the roads in like, for example, the Government Center here, those aren't necessarily maintained by Public Works, that's a facilities thing, so we may not be, that may, this wouldn't necessarily cover that. I, I do want to highlight, though, that, first of all, if there's ever an immediate threat to health, you know, to health and safety, I'm not going to sit and quibble over the differences over what's in a contract. We're going to go out and get the work done, and then we'll beg forgiveness later. But, you know, I think that's one thing to really highlight. The other thing we can highlight, too, is under, when I talked about the, the spectrum of emergencies, if we ever have an emergency that's way over on this side, that's, that's severe, that's immediate, that needs immediate, I mean, this Board has emergency authority to meet under a very short, short notice. So, this doesn't extinguish those rights. I would certainly, when those, if, and if that ever occurred, we would certainly urge the Board on that size and level of catastrophe, that's appropriate for the Board to take immediate action, not for me necessarily to go in. This is an idea to try and capture those in that middle ground, that kind of gray area where immediate action may be needed. It's, it's an immediate threat to health and public safety, but, you know, through normal procedures, it may take many months to procure and solicit in service a contract, but this avoids those necessary, those entanglements. While still providing some checks and balances to me to ensure that I'm meeting the spirit of this by bringing that report back to you, there's also budgeting parts of that, too. So, you're, you're, you're still heavily involved throughout the process. It's just this one piece that I am proposing that gives me a little bit of authority to move more quickly.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
I can appreciate the need of response to a potential incident. I just want to thank you for this last paragraph, in an effort to maintain transparency and accountability. I think that goes a long ways and, you know, just getting the right work done, and I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I do want to highlight, too, that ultimately, I report to the five of you, and if I abuse this power and authority, you know, that, that's something, that's the greatest check and balance right there, is, is I need to make sure that I'm meeting the wishes of, of the Board of Supervisors, and if I'm acting in a manner that does not do so, you know, I'm at risk, and, and the county as a whole is at risk. So, that's the reason that's in there, is because it's a check to ensure that anyone, myself or my successors, put thought and detail into that process before actually making a decision to move forward.
Supervisor Mills?
Thank you, Chair. I think part of the issue here is to try to define the emergency in the middle ground, as you state. That's, I mean, do we go back to state code in the definition of an emergency? Because we're talking about a fairly broad spectrum, and what about something that is later declared to be an emergency? It is not right now. In other words, at what point do we trigger OES? At what point do we trigger some of the other components that would need to be engaged? And, and also to engage the Board. You said, you know, in some of these situations that we may have to call a special meeting of the Board for the purpose of approvals, I understand that. The other piece that I'm concerned about is, is what's the upper threshold? We, we don't state what the top end could be here. And how far do we go before we trigger? I think the Board needs to call a special meeting. We need to have a more robust discussion from our side on this policy matter, rather than putting it out as an ambiguous, there's, there's an open end here. So, I would just like to see something that triggers what that limit is, that the Board then needs to be directly engaged in that conversation.
I, I appreciate those comments. I, I, I agree. That has been, again, as you can see, with a certain trepidation in the, in the report and my comments here, you know, the, I worry about a blank check that I can go out and perform work. Even under the best intentions, there is the potential for the misuse of that. So, this is feedback that's valuable, and I would look to the Board to provide direction on if there's an upper limit. I can provide some, some input of what I think on that, but ultimately, if that's the decision the Board would like to go, I'm, I'm, I'm very amenable to that process.
Josh, I, I appreciate you bringing this forward. You know, you and I had a long discussion about this, and I appreciated that when I did ask, what are the consequences you offered? Well, it'd be my head. Which I thought was very honest. I also, you know, we learned a lot in 2017 in some of the flood damage that happened, and we now know that if we had the ability to move quickly, we probably could have saved this county hundreds of thousands of dollars and people's time and effort. There's more than one example where a fifty-four inch concrete culvert dropped in there, could have solved a lot of our problems down the road. So, I want you to have the ability to move forward on things. You know, if that sinkhole in Moke Hill had ended up being an old mineshaft, which is always possible in Calaveras County, that would have been a major problem on Main Street. Fortunately, we got through that. So, I'm supportive of this process. If the Board wants to consider putting a limit on top of it, as Supervisor Mills suggested, we should have that discussion, or we should open it up to public comment and move forward. So, very well. Supervisor Calloway, did you want?
Public comment?
House of Commerce Taxpayer Association? Very, very good thing you're doing here. There probably should be a line item in the budget for emergency repairs, and it probably shouldn't be limited to a road or roads. It should be anything that the, that will be under the purview of the Director of Public Works, including maybe damage to a building or heaven knows what. And then, having a requirement that if those funds were expended for emergency purposes, there would be a report in a timely manner to the Board. I think that would pretty well do it, but there should be a limit to the budget item that probably the Board should specify. Thank you.
Yes, I had a number of questions, because I'm coming in kind of late on this. Are the roads already designated, or is this a last minute emergency that we're talking about? And how much money are we thinking is going to cost? And over what period of time will this money be allocated? And is this money coming out of the general fund? And are the residents on those roads consulted before work is done?
If there's no further public?
And I might have a follow-up, depending on what those answers are.
If there's no further public comments, I'll bring it back to the Board for, for the discussion. Supervisor Tofanelli? Supervisor Calloway?
Normally, I'd be quite restrictive in saying I want a cap. In this case, because of the experience that the county had during the 2017 storms, as Supervisor Garamendi said, I'd kind of like to leave this open-ended. I know in District Three, if the Public Works Director had had this authority, we wouldn't be in the position where we are two years later, costing us significantly more. We also have something which is not in here, but we have a Chief Administrative Officer who is involved in this, I'm sure, on an operational basis. And considering that we're getting into more of these scenarios, I would like to leave it as presented by the Public Works Director, and if we think at some point in time that we need to revisit this, then we can do that. But I think putting a cap of fifty or a hundred or a hundred and fifty, that's nothing compared to the experiences that we had throughout the county. So, I mean, I support this as presented and feel like I don't have to have a string on it, but as he said, it's his head, and it's the CAO's also. And I appreciate the fact that you understand the urgency of an emergency and acting without having to come back and call a meeting for every fifty thousand dollars you need to spend. So, I'd move this item as presented.
Any comment or second?
I, I just would like to continue the, the comment, and that is, is that I think that there needs to be a coordination with the CAO, with OES, because many of these will fall into thresholds and the triggers. And what we do in advance of a declaration plays into some degree the declaration itself. So, as long as we have good cooperative coordination between the various components, I would, I would be willing to support no threshold, but I think that at some point, though, the Board needs to have that conversation and, and be aware of what the situation is if we're going to move forward. That's, that's, that is the key. And a lot of this is time sensitive. I understand that. If you've got a blocked culvert, or you've got a culvert that's getting washed out and it's down the stream fifty yards, that is not a discussion to come to a Board or come to other people and have that conversation. You've got to get something done, and then we'll figure it out later. But as long as everybody is aware of that situation and is able to coordinate with you, they can sometimes help in ways that the Board can't. So, that's just my only point.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Well, I would, I would, I was going to say something along the lines of what Merida had said, but my only other comment would be that at some point, when you start getting up there on cost, that you at least make the Chair of the Board aware, so he can make a call one way or another, what to do, or continue, or, you know, we need to go back in front of the Board, call an emergency meeting to designate the funds, but at least with him in the loop, you have the Board somewhat in there, and he's aware of what's happening. So, that, that would be my added comment. Or her, Chairman, wherever, in the future.
Hopefully, there'll be no disasters in my tenure. Sure.
On that, I would second the motion.
Supervisor Stopper?
They've covered everything.
So, you're okay with it as it stands, but with the caveat that?
Caveat that we keep the Chair in the loop on what's going on, so he's aware and he can make some calls or input on it. If Merida wants to include that in her motion.
It's his head if he doesn't.
Are you including it?
She's not including it.
You're not including it? Well, I, that would be, then I would not second it, because I think, once we get to a threshold, or we get to, to ongoing disasters, especially if there's multiple disasters that could happen, that at least keep the Chair involved.
I mean, and it's not just the Public Works Director. Then we're going to have to micromanage the CAO and then say, OES getting involved. This county is generally superb when it comes to emergencies, and I don't think we need to tell the Public Works Director to contact OES. I mean, it becomes a team effort.
We're, we're not talking about micromanagement, and you know I am not a micromanager in any way, shape, or form. You know that. That's not, I'm just saying that because of what was being discussed here, that the alternative would be at some point possibly, that the Chair would be notified of what's going on. I think that's respect to begin with, from the level of staff, to at least let the Chair be aware of, hey, we're reaching this amount, this is what's going on, this is what's happening. So, that would be my comment.
So, are you saying that we should put a cap on it before he or she notifies it?
No, absolutely not. That's not what I'm saying.
So, what about if he or she notifies the CAO? And then the CAO decides?
Either way, CAO can notify the Chair.
All right. I'll amend the motion, approve the motion that the Public Works Director will keep the Chief Administrative Officer informed on what is occurring.
And if I may interject, that's good standard practice, right? As a Public Works Director, if I'm out on an island without getting consensus from the CAO and from OES and, and from legal and et cetera, I mean, that's part of my due diligence in this position, so I appreciate the feedback, and absolutely, that happens and occurs during decisions much smaller than this. So, I will, whether it's, whether it's on or through a resolution here or not, I, I will continue to do that, absolutely.
And just, and just one other thing quickly, too, as a reminder, this is authority that is being delegated to the Public Works Director pursuant to Public Contract Code. It's about giving the Public Works Director the authority to quickly contract in the event of an emergency, when the emergency affects county roads. It may well be something that's part of a larger emergency and that would require coordination, you know, with OES, with those other departments, but at the end of the day, the authority this delegates to Public Works is pursuant to Public Contract Code to be able to quickly do that.
I will, I will keep my second, then, with that addition.
So, we have a, we have a motion to carry this forward with the, with the stipulation that you will keep CAO in close contact, and the unwritten agreement that you're going to call, let us all know when this is happening.
I promise.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, we're giving you a lot of rope there, Josh.
More than one rope.
Can we get the questions answered that were asked?
I'm sorry, we have public comment. Any questions will come from the Board to the staff.
It's how people can see, I want, if you can turn it off.
We're talking about the break.
Turn it off, yeah. It's already on, perfect.
All right. Number eighteen.
Item eighteen is from Public Works to receive a presentation regarding the 2019 Calaveras County Five-Year Public Works Capital Improvement Program.
Good morning, again, Chair Garamendi and members of the Board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works, and I'm here today proudly to present the draft Calaveras County Public Works Capital Improvement Program. Before I get started, as you know, I was appointed to this position by the Board in October. One of my main goals was to bring a program, a draft program, to you shortly. The effort, the level of effort to go into this through staff is nothing short of miraculous. And so, I want to highlight the work of both Mark Kenzelak, our Business Administrator, who worked on the number side of things, and then Jennifer Ellis, our Senior Civil Engineer, who worked on the project descriptions and details. As I mentioned, this has been to the Board in many years, and to develop something like this from, essentially from scratch, in such a short period of time, is, especially with everything else going on, is to be commended. So, the purpose of today's presentation, I want to have a discussion with you on the revenue sources that fund the CAP. Public Works is funded quite a bit different than a lot of other programs in the county, and to bring you up to speed and the public some feedback on that, I think that'll be valuable, to discuss some of the near term and major future capital projects. But most importantly, this is an opportunity for the Board and the public to provide feedback and input on the projects that we have listed and the programs we're pursuing. As I mentioned, this program hasn't come to the Board in many years. It is my opinion that, in the honest, and you've heard me say transparency and accountability, in order for us to be transparent to the Board and to the public, this plan needs to come to you regularly for your review, to ensure that it's meeting your needs and the needs of your constituents. So, the first thing to tackle and to talk about is our revenue and what funds the, the program. Public Works is funded through two primary funding sources of revenue broadly categorized. Number one is discretionary. That's money that I can use as I see fit, or we see fit for different purposes. A lot of that, or a great proportion of that, is highway user tax dollars. That's gas tax, vehicle license fees. I have some slides in the presentation, I want to talk more about that, especially with the recent changes. Now, most all of our discretionary revenues, highway user taxes and other revenues, are committed to maintenance, and they should be, because our core service in Public Works is the good and public welfare of our community, and that happens through essential safety and maintenance activities that our road crews do. So, most of our discretionary revenue goes to them, it goes to support their services. Less than four percent of all the funds here in the capital plan are discretionary, which means most of the projects are being driven through restricted revenues. That means that if I have federal grants for a bridge, I can't go take that and go fix a pothole twenty miles away. That funding has to be for that particular bridge. Now, there is a new funding source. It was through Senate Bill One, I'll talk more about it. It's called the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account. It's RMRA for short. I'm going to use that acronym a number of times today, so I can go back to this slide if you forget what it means. But more than eighty-eight percent of our funding comes from either federal grants or the RMRA. As you can see, grants dominate our Capital Improvement Program, which is why you see the program heavily skewed to bridges and safety projects. And I'll talk again more about RMRA projects in an upcoming slide, but to talk with the Board and the public, highway user taxes and gas taxes, there's a lot of changes in the last year or two, and I want to bring the Board and the public up to, up to speed on this. So, prior to 2017, the funding from the gas tax didn't change very much. So prior to 2017, the funding from the gas tax didn't change very much. So as a result, Public Works over the last 10 years prior to 2017, in essence, was trying to do the same amount of work with about half or less of the money. As a result, you don't see that through necessarily, potholes still get fixed and essential safety stuff gets fixed, but you see it through a degradation of our roads, or you see it through archaic and outdated equipment, or you see it through the reductions in staff that you've seen in the engineering division. So in addition to that, over the last seven years, the highway user tax has fluctuated wildly from year to year. So as stewards of taxpayer dollars, we need to be cognizant of these fluctuations and be conservative in our estimates to assure we don't overspend our funds, which further affected our ability to deliver anything beyond really core safety maintenance sort of functions. Now, Senate Bill 1 was passed by the governor in April and the legislature in April 2017. Here in Calaveras, that means over the next four, four or five years or so, that means an additional $4.4 million annually. Now, that funding is broken into two categories. The R M R A one I already mentioned, that's restricted to projects. So the state, when they allocated that money, said, okay, we're going to give you a chunk, but part of this has to be done for projects. And so that's, this money is programmed in the C A P. You'll see it in projects and I'll talk about it in an upcoming slide. The remaining increase was done through discretionary funds, through the highway user tax increases in that, and that majority, if not all of that, is going to road maintenance, again, to, to buoy their services, realizing that they're a core function of the county. Now, a couple of things to highlight, these changes improve stability in our funding as well as gives us more certainty for future funding and forecasting. So I can introduce programs now that I, we weren't able to introduce in the past because we have certainty in our projections moving forward. Now, Proposition 6 came in November 2018. It was a statewide ballot initiative to repeal the gas tax, to return it back to levels in the early to mid 1990s. Statewide, that was defeated rather soundly, 57% of the vote voted to defeat that measure to keep the gas tax in place. However, the one thing I want to highlight is here in Calaveras, like many other rural counties, the, what happened was quite a bit different. Nearly, or essentially six out of 10 residents here voted in repeal of that. And the reason I highlight that is that really brings to the point of having to have these conversations with you. If the public is not seeing how we're spending it, and if they're not seeing us report out how that is, there is a distrust of us and government on how we spend these monies, and rightfully so, because we don't necessarily have the best track record over a lot of years doing that. So this is an important first step to try build, to try and build trust with the community and with the board on these sort of fundings. So federal grants are the backbone of our program. They fund, they fund primarily road safety and bridge replacement projects. Unfortunately, there's not 72 grant funding programs to fund all sorts of activities. We go after the ones that we're the most successful with, and we go after a whole bunch of ones I'm not listing here, but the three primary programs in this, in the capital plan, the highway bridge program funds bridges, the highway safety improvement program funds road safety projects. And then finally, there's a congestion mitigation and air quality program that's funded through the COG, that funds bike lanes, sidewalks, other things to help reduce emissions from vehicles. So setting the framework of how the money comes into the program, that results in projects coming out of the program and hopefully projects that are being worked on in folks' neighborhoods. As I mentioned, the R M R A, that's the Senate Bill 1 funding. Right now, that money's programmed as road repaving. And I have a slide here in a, in a second that talks about the condition of our roads, but we need attention on our roads and we need it now, and I think you're not going to find a lot of folks to disagree with that. Over the next four years, we have about 13.3 million set aside for programming for road repaving. Now, the prior, a year or two ago, the board did approve a smaller project funded through this. They were in Murphy's Valley Springs and Copperopolis. These roads listed here. In review of that, after having a new fresh set of eyes, I have some concerns on the deliverability of that project. The geography, these, these, these projects are pretty widely spaced out. These roads are also really small. So our contractor is going to be spending more time driving back and forth to projects and setting up traffic control than they actually will be paving roads. And finally, the timing, if we do move forward with this project, we're already a little late. If we wait a little bit longer, the proactive agencies are already bidding these projects, knowing that now the Senate Bill 1's here, everyone has this pot of money, there aren't a lot of new contractors, so it's supply and demand, and we're on the, the back end of, of, of being able to get out in front of this. So as a result, if I did move forward that in the direction of the board, we would have to combine those with a couple of other projects. So a few that I've seen, or my staff and I have seen in the plan, the West Point Bike Way, that's a project in, in District 2. That includes resurfacing the road and adding some, some bicycle signage and some directional signage. We could do this, as well as the improvements in front of Mountain Ranch Road, we could resurface and do some of the improvements as part of this project, not necessarily this funding, but this, this project. But even without that, I still think we're going to have to pay a hefty premium in order to deliver that project this calendar year. What I like to do in this situation is if I, if I don't necessarily fully agree or have different recommendations, is to have a recommendation for you, not do A, let's do B. And I don't have that for you today. And the reason for that is we don't have a system in place right now that accurately analyzes and prioritizes our pavement condition. And what we need is a study, a pavement condition index study, to best utilize this funding, not just this year, but over the lifetime of, of the program, especially if these programs, this funding is staying in place in perpetuity. So to bring you and the, and the public up to speed on pavement condition, the acronym, we love acronyms, the acronym's P C I, but it's ranked zero to 100, just like a, a test in, in, in school. If you get 100, it's a perfect score, it's a brand new paved road. Zero is a dirt road, it's a road incomplete disrepair. Based on studies we did about a decade ago, and my, my impression, we're in the poor category somewhere in the mid 40s. This is not dissimilar from other rural counties, but what it really highlights is we have a long way to go to get our roads into a reasonable shape moving forward. So we are moving forward with the pavement condition. I know at the last meeting, a member of the public had mentioned the need to do that. We were actually doing that, we've been working on that for the last two months. It's a collaborative process between the Calaveras COG and Angels Camp. The project's funded through the COG, so no local dollars or no, no county funded dollars are going through that. And what it does is it allows us to establish this pavement condition index, not just county wide, but also for each county maintained road. By doing that, it allows us to, to know the condition of our roads and then develop and analyze various funding scenarios, various project types, whether we repay, we surface, and it allows us to kind of look at all that data and plug that in to get a, a, a report back that gives us the best bang for our buck. How do we best use our money? As a result, the hope is to prioritize projects, roads, et cetera, throughout the county, because this need is a county need. It's not a district need, it's not a neighborhood need. The county as a whole needs, needs immediate attention. Now, the plan for that, since I don't have that planned today, my plan today, moving forward, is I will present that to you as at a later date, likely in the second half of 2019, as part of an amended capital improvement program with those projects in place. So it's why you may not see some roads on this list that you were expecting to see, it's because my hope is to look at this holistically as a county wide and then come up with recommendations that the board can support. Now ultimately, I do recommend delaying that project, this particular project, although I can move forward at the board's discretion, I think there's value in waiting until the study's complete and then looking at something much bigger. We do have a couple of years of this funding, it started coming in in, I think, late 2017, early 2018. We are sitting there a year or two worth of funding, so starting in 2020, we would move forward with an extremely robust repaving project over the next, and moving on to in perpetuity, we're talking millions of dollars invested back into their roads where they need to be. So another thing I'm excited about is vehicle and equipment replacement. Much like I need this laptop or this projector, or I need a printer to do my work, our road crews need the equipment to perform their work, whether it's shovels, or tractors, or light duty equipment, or asphalt rollers. If they don't have their equipment, they're compromised from doing their job effectively. To say our current fleet is well past its useful life is a huge disservice. It is, for lack of a better word, decrepit. Our, our, as a matter of fact, I have folks on the road crew that are probably younger than some of the trucks they're driving. So now, obviously, with the funding crisis, when we look at people, or core services, or equipment, the decision's fairly straightforward. But in my opinion, we're coming out of this funding crisis in Public Works, and this is the time to invest in the equipment for our, our vehicle, for our maintenance crews. Now, we have done plans in the past, but we've never secured funding for that, and this plan changes that. This plan proposes a $2.35 million investment through 2023. This is not enough, but this is a good start to get us moving in the right direction to start identifying some of the vehicles that are most at need. And then similar to the, to the paving plan, I would bring an updated plan to you as part of an amended C A P to come to you probably middle to the later half of this upcoming year. So moving on to construction. So first of all, I think I've met with each of the board individually, I've talked about projects, I'm pretty passionate about project delivery. One thing, just for public disclosure and honesty, I like to push projects, I like to deliver projects. If there's a project, I'm not sure if it's going to deliver this year or next year, I'd rather show it this year and then push it back a year than just play the safe route. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one is we have a lot of projects behind this. I think we have somewhere around three dozen projects in the capital plan. If, if a number of these get delayed this year, that affects our ability to deliver projects moving forward. And number two, with the, 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 the good condition, the current condition of the economy, construction costs are outpacing the consumer price index and the price of, of, of regular inflation. So we're seeing 5 to 10% or more increases in, in construction on a year in, year in, year in, year out basis. So there, it behooves me to try and push projects as aggressively as possible, because if I don't, that project may jump up significantly. A good example is, is striping, that's in this list. In between the year from 2017 to 2018, in the one year pre and post the new gas, or the new highway user tax, my striping project and my previous jurisdiction jumped 50%. And the only reason for that was there was only two or three licensed striping contractors. They were doing so many jobs, they could basically write whatever check they want. So again, I, that's my mode of operation, I want to push, push, push until I cannot push anymore, and then we'll push the next year. So you'll see projects in here, I have given them likelihoods, moderate to high. High are things that I think are 80% or higher in delivering. Moderate, I would say, are 50% or greater, but I still, you're going to see me until it's physically impossible, push these projects to the highest possible. A couple of projects, most of these you're pretty familiar with, the one you're not familiar with on this list potentially is Murphy's Lighting District. This is one we've been working with Murphy's, the town, for the last year or two. We think we're in a position to deliver a project to expand their downtown lighting, and we've been working closely with them to identify locations. P G and E was going to do that. Staff and I felt that we could deliver that more quickly than P G and E could, so we've, we're going to be assuming the responsibility for that. Some other projects, we already talked a little bit about West Point, Single Tree Bridge. We actually, the board earlier today approved the plans and specifications for that project. We are, the only thing between us and delivering that project this year is federal approval. So we submitted our project to the, to the feds and to the state for approval. We're hoping that they move the funding up because they see this project ready to go and it's all done and ready to be bid. I've had pretty good success in the years having that happen. So I'm pushing my buttons that I need to push in order to get Caltrans and the feds to advance this money. If we don't, we're going to be in awesome shape to move forward in 2020. But again, I like to push, so why not push? The last project here, this is a very unsexy project. It's a delineator project, it's to improve visibility and road visibility, but I get very excited about these projects because when we talk about road safety, we can do individual projects to fix a curve or fix a sight distance issue, but this is a project that we call systemic. It hits a lot of miles of road. And so if I can improve striping or improve signage on a lot of miles of road, my likelihood to improve safety jumps dramatically. So again, this isn't something that we put on a press release and the public kind of, you know, yawns, and rightfully so, it just doesn't have a lot of bells and whistles, but in the end, in our core mission of public safety, this is a big one for us. Moving forward to key projects over the next four years, if your project's not on here, I apologize, it's, it's not to say it's not important, I just put a few in here that I thought I would identify to the board, to the public. We have 11 more bridges to deliver. That's a lot. And so that's again, over the next, until we get these delivered, these are going to be the core of our program. Oberon's Ferry Left Turn Lane, we have most of the funding set aside for that. I think we can deliver that project for far cheaper than what it's programmed, so we're currently looking at a minor redesign. It's going to cost us about $10,000 to $15,000. I think we're going to save about probably $800,000 or more. That project, in my opinion, was way over scoped. And so that's part of my thing, step back, look at a more reasonable approach to get to deliver quickly. I'm still pushing, again, that one I'm showing in 2020, I'm trying to push it for 2019, I'm going to do everything I can. Similar with Six Mile Road, that has a federal funding element to resurface that road. The feds are giving, are, are, we're going through bureaucracy, if folks think that local bureaucracy is difficult, the federal bureaucracy is many times more difficult. We're trying to push through those layers right now to deliver that project this year. More likely it's going to be a 2020, but we are pushing as we speak. Mountain Ranch Road, again, this is another project we're looking at, we still being, I think we can deliver this far quicker and, and less expensive than what we've shown it as. State Route 4, Wagon Trail, this is the dominant, single biggest project in our program. It's in cooperation with Caltrans and the COG, although we're the project lead, that's about $21.5 million for that particular phase. And again, the road safety and signage, again, an unsexy project, but this will update, repair, replace, and bring up to standard road, signage along more than 200 miles of road. And so when you look at that sort of systemic improvement, making roads, signs more visible, making signs more predictable, more accurate, by improving predictability for drivers, that improves their ability to perform on the road and therefore decreases accidents. Again, something not very sexy, but very near and dear to my heart. So our five-year funding window, as you can see, bridges and the improvement project is, is the Wagon Trail project dominate that, road paving is also a significant portion. If the board gives other direction, that 17.3% is directly related to that R M R A funding. If the board gives different direction on projects, that would split that chart a little bit, but again, we're currently proposing to spend that mostly, if not entirely, on road, on road, road paving and other road restoration projects. So in summary, before we open it up to questions, obviously, the recent legislation, both with Senate Bill 1 and Proposition 6, has brought in more certainty to us, it's given us some more flexibility to move forward with our core projects and core missions. We are still driven by federal grants and other restricted revenues, which is why you don't see a lot of projects, we hear projects in the public, why don't you do this, why don't you do that? When we hear that, we look for funding, but without a, a grant or other funding source, it's very difficult to find funding for that, especially larger projects with the very scant discretionary funding that we tend to put towards those core safety and maintenance projects. We do have plans for separate paving and vehicle replacement programs to bring to the board in the second half of 2019. Most of all, if you take one thing today, if the public takes one thing away today, we hope you take away that this is our, our attempt to create a thoughtful and intelligent plan for future projects. Not only consistent with your policies and the policies in the general plan, but with the public's expectations and with sound fiscal policies. I think in the past, maybe one thing we've fallen a trap for is program projects, program projects, and maybe not fully thought out the pieces that need to come into that and funding, or how they all line up if we have enough cash on hand to deliver those projects. So this is that thoughtful approach to try and balance the needs throughout the county, because there are a myriad of needs, try and balance that thoughtfully and appropriately. So the next steps, obviously, the feedback is going to be key, any, any comments you have. We do typically, between now and adoption, this is a workshop only, so this is an opportunity to provide feedback. What we are doing is an opportunity for each of the individual board members to meet with us, so we can talk about projects in your district that you're concerned with. That way, while they may not get programmed in this, some we may be able to program, other ones, it gives us the first glance at it, so we can start working through, whether it's through grants, or whether it's through impact fee programs or development fees, et cetera, so it gets on our radar, so we can start prioritizing those individual projects so we can bring them to you at a later date. So that is my presentation. I greatly appreciate your and the public's patience, and I am very much looking forward to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Stoppert? You have a question? Supervisor Mills?
Okay, I'll go. Thank you, Chair. I know that we have made a lot of attempts at various grants, be it the Flap Grant and the Build Grants, et cetera, with the federal programs, and I know that COG just did a debrief with me, O'Connell, on, you know, why, what do we need to do beyond what we're doing now in making these federal applications functional enough to get them? So one of the things I think came out of that was securing your additional support from other affected organizations, groups, agencies, et cetera, is critical. We really have not spent enough time doing that in advance of these grant applications. Some of it is minor rewrites, but that support piece has kind of been in the background. And so I think we need to really spend more time, even from our level here, going out and eliciting the support for various projects so that we, we get, can start seeing some success on those grants, especially federal. Second, the Oberon's Ferry Bridge, to me, is an evacuation route. And I know that traffic studies have put the counts at around 4,000 vehicles a day across that bridge in both directions, and, and it's kind of like been pushed into the sideline, but it's, it's a narrow bridge, eventually, we're going to have to do something with it. I'd like to see it. I'd like to see it come up into the cycle somehow and look at options because there's been five iterations of that thing going back. And I think Gary, you can remember 2010, even earlier than that, various discussions. We lost a lawsuit with Tuolumne County over the O'Burn's Ferry Road. So, eventually, we're going to have to say, how is that community that based on most vulnerable, it's from the north? And if they had to evacuate to the south, how many vehicles per hour could we put across that existing bridge versus what would it take to get a safer evacuation route? Or maybe we need to start looking at a broader perspective of sheltering in place and what those areas would look like. That left turn pocket has been on the radar since 1995. We had another death last year. It is a single road segment in Calaveras County that has been identified by COG as the most dangerous spot in the county. So, I still would like to see what we can do to get that moved forward. Some of it, I think, might be behavior-related, and I'll speak with you privately about that. But I think that there's more to this picture than simply just installing a pocket and thinking that's going to solve the problem. Many times, it's driver behavior that can create these problems. And the last one I want to talk about is Six Mile. That's not all in my district. Some of it's in the Scalloways. But that gravel section of that road and the amount of events that occur out at Couts, where those people would need that alternate evacuation route back to Highway 4 using the gravel portion of Six Mile in the summertime, is very dangerous simply because of the amount of dust that's being created and the visibility issues that are created in trying to evacuate in that direction. So, as soon as that chip seal can occur, I'm sure that's going to improve safety in evacuating in an emergency from the Couts venue. And I'm not a proponent of, you know, saying, you know, Couts is the only answer here, but I just see that as a potential problem. It's been in place for a long time. So, those are just my comments based on what your presentation was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Toffinelli?
Thank you. And Josh, on that subject, Six Mile Road, you and I had some conversations on it. And we talked about possibly using CMAC because of the dust. And I think CMAC funds would fit into that scope. To at least, I'm looking at, the chip seal is not going to be a permanent solution. Actually paving that section, and I think it's 1.4 miles of that road, would be a permanent solution because the chip seal, you don't know, it's not, depends on how heavy a traffic's used, what's on it, how long it's going to last. And it could last less than a year and you start having dust again. And it is a very serious and dangerous section during the summertime when events go on and people use it. You can hardly see the car in front of you sometimes when you're trying to leave, especially at night going down that road. So, I think CMAC, we can talk, discuss at COG, utilizing some of those funds for that project. And then, I appreciate the opportunity. I will take the opportunity to meet with you separately before we bring this back and go over some of the roads. And you and I can set a date to travel throughout my district, and I will show you my concerns firsthand. And then, when this comes back to us for action, we can have that discussion.
I'll go to it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppard?
I was, I'm just going to reiterate where Gary just concluded with is, I would like to meet with you and go through areas. A lot of the stuff goes both through his district and my district. And I think even if Gary will consider it, maybe we can meet at the same time.
I'm open to that. Thank you.
Supervisor Callaway?
On the recommending of delaying the RMRA project, the small roads, until the study's done, is it your anticipation that you will do those, that small project, this year? Or we might be modifying some of the roads in that small project? That's question one. Okay, I'll just give you my second one. My concern gets when we start delaying it. Based on what I heard you say, there's, the contractors who do this are not hungry. And so, then, does it make it, if we don't get proposals out soon enough, then we're now pushing out? And these are the ones that most supervisors get calls on. We might not agree with your list, but it's the pothole calls and the, when are you going to pave my road calls? So, yeah, those are normally near and dear to our hearts. But I am wondering what your thought process is on wanting to delay it. I philosophically understand what you're saying, but I don't know where you're going with it after that.
Yeah, let me, supervisor, sorry for interrupting there, supervisor. It's a great question. And the reason I brought it up is I know the board had, in the past, acted on a small measure through, my predecessor had brought that to the board. The project's really small. I mean, if we did a chip seal or resurfacing, my early estimates are somewhere in the $75,000 to $100,000, $125,000 range. That's a tiny proj, I mean, that's almost not worth them coming out. I would be worried about getting bids, especially a little bit later in the season. That's why you saw me looking at other projects. West Point Bike Way, doesn't mean we can't do those separately or do those through separate projects, but, you know, my concern is just the size of it. It's such a small area, and especially with geographically, how far they are apart. And the reason I'm wanting to delay, and it also ties into the reason of the calls you get from the public on paving roads, is when the public calls and asks, when are you going to pave my road? It's a lot better answer to say, it's on your list for 2021 than I have no idea. And right now, I'm on the list of, I have no idea, which is not a good place to go because rightfully so, as advocates for your districts, roads in your district are in desperate need and in a tension of getting paved. And my job is to try and balance the needs of the five districts and to try and come back with a plan that you all support. So, the reason I think we're going to pay a hefty premium, we could certainly do it. I'm concerned about actually getting bids. If we do, I think we're going to spend 75 to 100% more than what we pay. We're not going to get a lot of bids. I would be worried about the quality just because contracting, larger contracting crews have A, B, C, D, E, F, and G crews all the way down. We're likely not getting a crew. They're probably in the Bay Area doing a $13 million job. So, all those things, that's, all those things are the reason why I'm making the recommendation that if we wait a little bit, come up with a thoughtful plan that takes, that looks objectively at all these roads and goes, okay, these are the roads that are in need, and then prioritize them. Because if we do 13 or 30 miles of road in a particular area, in a specific geographic reason, region, we get a significant economy of scale in our prices by doing it that way. At the same time, if I don't have a plan for you, and rightfully so, the public's going to demand, why aren't you doing my roads? So, if I have a plan that says, it might not get to you this year, but in two years, I'm going to have a $3.5 million job and we're going to do these 11 roads. And by the way, we're still doing potholes and doing patches as necessary. And our road crews will be doing a lot of the preparation work for these. So, they'll see work in advance of this, whether it's in advance years or in the season ahead, a season behind. To me, that, to me, if I'm a member of the public, and I can't speak for the public as a whole, but if I know there's a plan and we're meeting that, those goals, that year or two, most folks are understanding reasonable in the way I'm doing that. So, that's the reason I'm proposing, appreciating that everyone has needs. They're all, I mean, the needs are there. They're absolutely critical throughout the county. This gives me, as far as the use of these money, in my opinion, the best way to use these funds most efficiently.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Before we go to public comment, I need to address the fact that I changed up how we normally do things of the last public comment to address Ms. Newman's questions. And most public comments that I've gone to historically, when publics give comments, it's public comment, not public question. And so, generally, the comments are given, the questions. Then, if the board says, hey, that's a really good question, they would ask the staff. If the staff saw something and said, hey, I've really got to address that. It's a critical point that I missed, and they can bring that forward through the board. That's a change to the way we normally do. We have done things the last two years that have been on the board. And I would like to, is that a way, do we want to do it the way we've normally done it? Public questions or public comment as we move forward in this next phase? It's just a poll of the board? Mr. Mills?
Public comment is exactly that, is public comment. When I've been on other boards, you work with the supervisor or the director, et cetera, and I would just assume they'd be staying as public comments.
Go ahead. Historically speaking, when possible, we do answer the questions that the public does ask. And some of them are valid questions. And that's been in process for a number of years. It's just the way it's been done. Not all the questions are answered. And again, it's the discretion of the Chair moving forward is how he wants to go. But historically, when questions are asked and we provide answers to those questions, we've let staff answer those questions.
Mr. Stoppard?
I concur with Gary. That's the way I have experienced it from the other side of the podium in the past.
Supervisor Callaway?
I think we should allow questions because that's sometimes what the comments are, or not comments, they're questions. And one way to handle that or an option is to say, we will get back to you with answers. Or the department head or the staff member will get back to you.
Thank you. Just a poll for direction on how I'd consider. Ms. Newman, my apologies. Would you like to come on up?
The first part you just answered was, public comment allow questions and concerns to be raised? Because otherwise, it kind of negates public interest. You know, if you don't care what we're talking about or what our questions are, we're going to quit caring. The questions I had last, okay? And I'm thinking there's a carryover into this agenda item because I saw up there, emergency repairs. So, does that, this agenda item carry back to the last one that was emergent?
Ms. Newman, they do not. I can express my apologies. But if you have questions specific on this, and I promise when we break here, I will stay after with Mr., with Josh, and we'll answer all your, all the answers that I didn't answer at the last item.
Okay, so this is for this agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I do have one question. Comment question. Several years ago, Double Springs Road was repaved. And at that time, I was told a two-lane highway repaving one mile costs approximately $100,000. And I want to know if that's the monies we're talking about? A two-lane highway, one mile, $100,000? If that is still true? And about this program? It carries over to the last one? I'm sorry, the rest of my questions. But thank you for your consideration.
Now?
Councilwoman, Taxpayer Association, excellent presentation. And I think we really concur with most of what's said by the supervisors, and particularly Dennis's comments about the bridge, O'Burn's Ferry Road. One of the things that was mentioned, a source of the funds is coming from SB 1. Our association didn't agree with the way that that was put together. And when we had the Prop 6, which was to repeal that, the state chose not to use those words to make it appear like we're doing away with funding for roads or something. And as a consequence, it failed at the state level. But in our county, it did pass because of 20, 18 by 24-inch signs that simply explain that that was to repeal SB 1. Now, repealing SB 1, which is probably going to go, continue, that's not dead yet, is not the solution. The original problem was, the state was not allocating the funds properly. They had plenty of money from the taxes that they were already taking from us. They spent the money on other stuff. Okay? They didn't give the money back to the county so we could take care of our roads. And because of that mismanagement at the state level, they tried to cure it by taxing us more and doing it in such a way that was really bad taxation. That SB 1 has a clause in it, allows it to increase each year. Unbelievable. And be spent on other things besides roads. Well, so, we should plan on SB 1 being repealed at some point. And we should plan on working with the, with the State Association of Supervisors to encourage the state to better plan the tax money. That means that you can't, you can't use the tax money to try to build railroads or something else. It really disrupts the process. So, this is a comment, not a question, and we appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
There's anybody else who wishes to speak after Bill? Please stand up, otherwise Bill will be the last speaker.
Bill Wilson, District 1. Where we live in Circle 20, we have Pool Station Road. And it doesn't matter where you go, if you go out of Circle 20, you're on Pool Station Road. Pool Station Road is a series of potholes patched over and over, except at both ends. Now, there used to be signs at both ends of Pool Station Road before the Onito Ranch and at Highway 4 that said, nothing over seven tons was allowed on that road. Those signs mysteriously have disappeared. So, now we see logging trucks, huge trucks, big trucks on Pool Station Road. Sometimes, they have a little bit of trouble getting around a couple of those corners, which makes it a little dicey when you happen to be going the other way. It's fine. If you're following them, they're going to be the ones that run off the road. I notice it's not on the project list. It's not anywhere around there, and I understand that. There are many, many, many more roads that have definitely more need than Pool Station. My question and my wonder is, why are we allowing these large trucks on a very inadequate road when Highway 4 and 49 are where those trucks should go? Unless you're going to pave Pool Station and make it a real road? It was a wagon trail. That's still what it is. A wagon trail that still has chip and seal on it, not just asphalt in some places. Chip and seal is never a good solution when you're doing a road. We found that out in Circle 20 because we did chip and seal. And chip and seal is just a waste of good money when you can actually do a little bit less in asphalt and actually get a road that's there for 10 to 20 years. Where chip and seal, two to five years, you've still got potholes, and you've got potholes already in brand-new chip and seal. I just think it should be considered, especially around here, to just not even bother with chip and seal. We do have an asphalt plant now in the county, I believe, over at Carson Hill. And let's use asphalt. Let's make these roads good for 10, 15 years so we don't have to go back every year. As Josh can tell you, I call him every couple of months. Hey, we got potholes. Can you send the guys out? They spend more time doing potholes on Pool Station than they probably do anything else around here or other roads that need potholes, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was an informational item. If there's no further, Supervisor Mills?
Just one point that I found rather interesting. To me, it's an anomaly, Josh, and that's on packet page 343. It has to do with Manji Ranch Road and at Coyote Creek. Manji Ranch is not a county-maintained road. The first bridge that was put across there was a 40-foot flatbed drawn in there by my uncle. And the pond to the south of it is on his property. So, it's just, it's just kind of a real strange bird that we're doing a bridge right there. And I would like to have a little bit more conversation about that one.
Yeah, I'm happy to meet with you offline. I do know that, I looked at this one when I was reviewing. It does show up in our maintain mileage list, so there's a little short stretch. We could certainly look at the records to verify whether it's a maintain mileage or not. If it's not, you know, we certainly don't, you know... If it's not, you know, we certainly don't want, you know, do we, is that the appropriate use of funds to be spending public dollars on a private road? But I'll happy, I'm happy to talk more with you offline.
Let's talk offline before we go too far with it.
Fair enough.
Thanks. Supervisor Stoppard?
Yeah, and, and to Mr. Wilson's point, Josh, I have noticed, not only on Pool Station, but other roads, that those, those limit signs are no longer there on several roads, and I'll get with you on that. But, but the limit sign is basically for the bridges and not the tonnage on the road itself. Am I correct on that many times? Maybe not always, but many times, it's what the limit of a bridge will hold. And if we're running semis down Pool Station Road, he has a very valid point in how long that road, or maybe even the bridge, some of the bridges on that road, will be showing up here as a project because of what's happening.
Yeah, it's a valid, a very valid question. Obviously, you know, bridges are low-rated based on Caltrans studies. You know, roads are a little different, so just by, just for brief aside, counties are very limited in their ability to just arbitrarily identify because no one wants semis on the road. So if we had authority to go put, you know, no limit, you know, no semi signs, they'd be all over the county. So the state, especially for roads funded by public dollars, public, they're for public use. And so the state's pretty aggressive at that. There are a few limitations to that regarding safety and, or there's some other things. We could certainly look at Pool Station as part of that, and I'll dive into a little bit. We'll talk more about that. But I think there's two different things there I wanted to touch briefly on. And if the public ever has questions on it, they're more than welcome to call us. We're happy to talk to them.
Thank you very much. With that, we are going to adjourn for lunch. We will return and start promptly at 2:00. Thank you.